I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 at 5:00 p.m. Could we, a member of the city council may be attending by telephone or video conference. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lindenfelder?
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
And Councilmember Wade?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation this evening will be given by Verlin Tonell of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Do we, is... Is Mr. Tonell on the Zoom?
Verlin, we can't hear you.
I think it's muted.
Do you have me muted?
It's, we can hear you now. Please, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, our Father which art in heaven. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet this way this day by electronic and other means. We're grateful for the effort that goes out on our behalf by our city council and those others that are present today. And pray that thou would bless them, that they might be wise and make good decisions that will affect all of us. We're grateful for their efforts and the time that they put in on our behalf and say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. And our first order of business this evening pertains to appointments for the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission, reappointments actually. The Park Commission has two current, recently appointed commission members that are both serving partial terms that end December 31st, 2020. Both Ann Dory and Karen Fogg have expressed interest in being reappointed to their first full year, three-year term, and staff recommends approval. Annie, I think, I don't know if they're here on Zoom, but I know that, I think they had some statements.
They are not joining us via Zoom, but the one statement we received was attached to the council communication for your review.
Okay, it's not available for reading here. We, okay.
I did not since it was attached.
Okay, well, the councils had a chance to read the, the statements, and so I think the Park liaison, Councilmember Mello Keener. Comments, please.
Yeah, I recommend that we appoint for a three-year term both Ann Dory and Karen Fogg. Reappoint them.
I have a motion to appoint. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint these two members, reappoint them to a full three-year term. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Our second order of business is called to the public, comments from the public, and those wishing to, to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. This is a hybrid meeting, and so there were three different ways to actually take action to speak to the public. But any action that is taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. So the first way to give comment to the council was through in-person. Those wishing to address the council in person did not have to pre-register, but do we have anyone that has stepped up to speak to the council and call to the public?
Not tonight.
Okay, the second way was through call-ins. Those wishing to address the council by telephone did need to pre-register by 9:00 a.m. today by emailing cityclerk@cityofkingman.gov. And once registered, they were sent a link with additional instructions. Did we have anyone who has registered to call in for call to the public?
We do have one request from Jennifer Esposito. I will enter her into the meeting now.
Okay.
Ms. Esposito, you have been entered into the meeting.
Hello, Ms. Esposito. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead. Give your name.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, please go ahead. Give your name.
Yes, my name is...
And city and...
Jennifer Esposito, 3211 East Navally Avenue, Kingman. Mayor and council, thank you very much for having someone call me and after the last meeting and clear up the situation with the swimming pool money. He told me that the $80,000 wasn't missing per se, but it was actually missing from the budget because you guys swept the money from the budget and swept money from other departments as well in anticipation of sales tax revenue shortfall. And this told me that essentially you knew that previous actions would actually hurt local businesses, but you took those actions anyways. And I find that, I find that a bit startling because now you are asking for a shop local campaign, which I believe is probably to help make up for those sales tax revenues, when in reality you could have prevented the scenario to begin with. At least that's my opinion and the opinion of many other people. So while I wish you well in your shop local campaign, because I would like to see local businesses succeed and not be subject to arbitrary proclamations, you know, it's very easy, as I previously pointed out, for people to shop somewhere else, and a lot of us have. So I hope that going forward, you guys will make better decisions, and I look forward to shopping in Kingman once again. Thank you very much, and have a beautiful evening.
Thank you. The third way to make comments to the council was through written comments submitted by 9:00 this morning. Were there any comments submitted for public, call to the public?
No written comments, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We, we always do point out that members of the public can watch these meetings live via Channel 4 and/or on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. And after this meeting, you can watch the reruns there too, on the YouTube channel. The next order of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any agenda items that one of our council members would like to remove for discussion?
Mayor, I have one.
Was that Councilor Nelson?
Yes.
It is, yes, thank you. I'd like to actually remove item E, please.
Item E, okay. Is there any other item that would like, that a council would like to remove? Then I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G with the exception of V.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as stated, items A through E, I mean, A through D and then F. Yep. S through G, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilor Nelson. All, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of V. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Item E, bulk fuel contract with Rebel Oil. The city of Kingman utilizes cooperative contracts for the purchase of bulk fuel. The attached contract is a cooperative contract with Mojave County and Rebel Oil. This contract will serve as one of two contracts used for purchasing fuel throughout the year, and staff recommends approval. Councilmember Nelson?
Mayor, I actually just need to remove myself from voting on this due to personal reasons.
Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to approve item E with Councilmember Nelson abstaining.
I'll make that motion.
Council? And we have a motion and a second to approve item E on the consent agenda, bulk fuel contract. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to old business. Updated CDBG public hearing number two. On June 2nd, 2020, during the CDBG public hearing, city council selected the proposed project of ADA barrier, barrier removal activities at and around the intersection of Stockton Hill Road and Andy Devine Avenue. This information remains unchanged in our fiscal year 20 CDBG application. Our original publication did not allow 16 days of public comment time leading up to the June 2nd public hearing. The notice was published for this hearing, that was published, provided enough days so that the city is now in compliance with CDBG public comment regulations. No action is required on this agenda item, only to accept any public comments received during the meeting about our fiscal year 20 CDBG application. So I will, so this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone who would like to make comments on the CDBG application for fiscal year 20, 20. I will ask again, is there anyone that would like to make comments? And the third time, anyone that would like to make comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public meeting. And so we move on to item B, council ratification of the mask mandate, council discussion and possible action on the mask mandate. This, of course, is a continuation that the council asked for at the, at the September meeting, that we bring this back tonight to discuss it again and decide whether to extend it further. And since that time, I'm sure that all of us have had time to research, do research, and, and come to some judgments of ourselves. And so I really, I'm sure that everyone knows where my, that I stand in the same place because, one, it was in the paper Sunday, and two, I've also made comment on that on social media. But I do remain dedicated to this simply because, to maintaining and extending the mandate, because I do believe it is in the best interest of our citizens' health, and I also think it's in the best interest of keeping our businesses open. And the cases are rising again in the state and in our county. And as we know, there's dramatic rises in other parts of the country and across the world. So I'm not, I'm going to kind of leave it at that at this moment, and I don't think we have any speakers arranged.
Actually, the Health Department provided a PowerPoint or a presentation.
They did. That... New to me.
It was the most accurate and up-to-date information that they had, and they provided it today, so.
And who is going to present that?
That would be, I guess, me.
Please go ahead.
All right, thank you. So Denise Burley and her team provided the following information. So I just, Denise asked me to share and remind everybody that as part of the development of this disease, what we, we know is that actions taken both in perhaps the spread, whether it's masking or not masking, whether it's going back to school, all those things take two to four weeks to show themselves as being impactful and for the spread or the, the lack of spread of the disease. So I just want to make sure I got that out there. So in this, we have the next slide, please. The question that the county Health Department has been asked, as you can imagine, many, many times, is, does, does masking really help? And Denise and her team are pointing to this information that has been compiled. And so they wanted me to make sure and share this information with regards to both, does masking work? And in this, in that link, you will actually see the information provided, that it has had, where it has been studied. It has had an effect. And then, do mandates work? Also showing a decline in daily COVID cases, a rate spread in the, in that, in that study comparison as well. So we will absolutely make that available. Yes?
Just one question on those. Do you know if those are observational studies or controlled studies?
You know, I, I, that I do not know. That I would assume that in those links that they would outline what they did and show whether those are observational or scientific. Yep. I apologize, I, I didn't have enough time to research the links themselves, so. But just wanted to make sure that, that those were available. Next slide, please.
Manager Foggan?
Yes.
But I noticed the source there was Lancet, which is a medical journal, I think.
Correct, that's correct. But which type, I'm, I'm just not sure. Yeah, the resource, the references are, are pretty legitimate. They're not, they're not unknown, so. All right. The other piece that we've obviously been tracking and have been interested in is the confirmed COVID-19 cases by week. Of course, we started this, this activity in March of this year and have been dealing with it now through the middle of October. And so these are the active numbers as tested positive through lab research or, or lab studies since May 28th until October 10th. And again, just as a reminder, this is the most recent information that we have from the county, and they, there is a lag. I think when Denise presented the last time she, we talked about this, she, she talked about the two to four-week lag, and the data is not always going to be real time because there's, there's still tests being waited for, so. Next slide. Another piece that has been very interesting and something that we've been tracking is how we're doing as far as the governor's orders. And this has to do with our ability to reopen all of our businesses and the different levels in which we can reopen. So Mojave County took a while to get into what is known as the moderate category, and that's tracked on number of COVID cases per 1,000 population. So we in Kingman have had, continued to have low COVID cases, which we are absolutely grateful for. But we don't get to track ours by ourselves. The, the governor wasn't kind enough to do that for us. He made it that we had to track this by county, and our county has not been able to get below the moderate. I'm happy to report that we did get into the moderate category several weeks ago, which did allow businesses to open. But restriction-wise, there continues to be a fairly strong restriction on restaurants, bars, and gyms. And what has to happen as far as number of people in the establishment, mask-wearing, capacity-wise, all of that good stuff remains into effect. Last week's report from the county indicated that we were, we were around 20 cases per thousand, or per 100,000, I'm sorry. And to be able to get into that lowest range, obviously, we have to have 10 cases per 100,000. So we, we still have a ways to go on that. But grateful that we were able to get into the moderate category, but still improvement needs to be made to help our business community. Next one. So one of the things, I think, I don't know if you've been watching this on the national news or not. I know this has been a discussion in several art, news articles that I've read or watched, and that is the COVID death rate has come down and remains fairly steadily low, which I think you're, you know, clearly seeing for Mojave County. And we're, we're actually grateful for that. And, you know, we, we know that where we saw our spike, I, I wouldn't speak to everybody's spike, but I, I know a portion of our spike was a result early on in the COVID outbreak with our assisted care, assisted living facilities. It was, it was really detrimental. Those, I would say that those businesses have taken the proper precautions now. And my hope is that we can keep these numbers as close to zero as possible. So I just wanted to make sure and share that. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Manager Foggan?
Vice Mayor's also.
Oh, nope. After you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. When I looked today at the statistics for the county, I thought our death rate was still at 5%, our fatality rate. It hasn't seemed to change a lot. I have noticed in the daily reports that the number of deaths are lower, and I'm hoping that that is going to take that fatality rate li, down. I think we're still a little higher than the state average, but at least that was the charts information. The other thing I wanted to ask is, the positivity rate, I don't know how that's impacting decision-making these days, but it was still at 8.5, and that's not close enough getting down to that minimal level.
That's correct. That's correct. We actually have to believe below 5%. Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. As you mentioned, the spikes in the data for Kingman that's being reported, I think at the time was, as we saw and as you mentioned, it's devastating in congregate settings, and that was a huge bump. And then I think there was an incident or a lot of cases down in maybe Peach Springs or somewhere that was outside of Kingman that also had an effect in the spike as well. Is that accurate? And I know that they've changed who's included in the Kingman service area since then, which is good for us. But when those two spikes happened, a lot of other areas were being reported in with Kingman. Is that correct?
Yeah, they have changed the reporting areas several different times. So it's really hard to take the data for Kingman and say it's been, it's been accurate since March 28th, because there has been some changes in who reports, how it's reported. So you're, you're right about, absolutely right about that.
Please go ahead.
Okay, great. The next couple of slides are, as far as the county Health Department is, is concerned, these are their take, these are their basic takeaways from, from this presentation. Studies have shown that masking and masking mandates have reduced transmission and, and the transmission, not just COVID, but other diseases as well. All three of the large, largest Mojave County cities' cases reduced after the mask declaration went into effect. And then other factors such as press conferences, information from the governor, press attention, have all helped in stopping the, the spread of the disease. People became more educated about it, you know, for a lot of different reasons. It causes better hygiene over time if you keep talking about it, that kind of thing. So that, when I talked to Denise, she wanted to make sure that, that this is from, from the information they're providing, this is their takeaways from it. I just would remind everybody, although the state has not, next slide. Although the state has not had any mandatory mask requirement, the governor and the state as a whole have really made a push to ask Arizonans to mask up and to do, to do the right thing. And haven't heard anything different from the, from the state Health Department or the governor. And so that, that plea to all Arizonans continue. And then finally, the last slide, the reason why we're, we're kind of here today is to just present this information. So as of today, with the most recent numbers that the county Health Department has, this is what the, this is what, and I just, we've been looking at this, this graph prior to this where we saw an increase in June. Then the governor had to get involved and, and started slowing down the state's economy, closing businesses, that kind of thing. And the downward trajectory from that that reflects in the, in the numbers when Bullhead, Havasu, and Kingman had asked, did their proclamations for masking. And I think that the part that was needed to be, that needed to be pointed out is the last section. So Bullhead City on 9/16 decided not to have a mandate for mask-wearing in their community, and Lake Havasu followed at 9/28. And of course, the, as I pointed out earlier, I'll point it out again, two to four weeks before we see ultimate results. But I think that it's worth pointing out that we have been able to keep our cases fairly level, stable. And since the mask mandate, we, as Mayor pointed out, across the county, we've seen an increase in number of cases in the last couple of weeks. Across the state, there's been increases, and across the country, there's been fairly large spikes. I could not speak to where, whether those different areas of the country had masking requirements or if they had la, you know, gotten lax on them. I, I have no idea. But I did want to just speak to the last couple of, of weeks that we have of data from the county that is showing that Bullhead and Havasu have had an increase in cases in at least the last week. Now, for us, our schools have been in session for a couple of weeks. We've been waiting to see what that means to this, to our community. So far, it's meant that I, that the schools are doing what they need to do to keep the disease down. So, yes, Vice Mayor, sorry.
During this graph?
Yes.
If, and then for Lake Havasu, do they have...
Yes.
Do you have any data on their medical, have hospitalizations? How many, have their hospitalizations increased? Do they have new people on ventilators? Because I feel it's important to make a distinction between the case-demic.
Yep.
Right, and so much reporting on cases.
Right.
Whereas the majority of people are recovering.
Yep.
So what is, what's, what's been the...
So we reached out to get that information. We, we did not hear back. So I, I do not have Bullhead or Havasu's ICU capacity. We did ask K R M C if they had experienced any, or if they had room in ICUs. The answer is that they do. The Vice Mayor had actually provided a list of questions that I'm happy, I'm happy to share with the group. I did email that to the, to the council for yours, but I'm happy to share that here as well. So the questions were this. Has K R M C seen a downward trajectory or a decrease in emergency room and outpatient visits for COVID-like illnesses? If yes, how many consecutive days? The answer is no. They have not seen a downward trajectory. So it, I think what that suggests is that they're seeing kind of that level that we're seeing in the graph. The next one was, has K R M C seen a downward trajectory or decrease in new COVID-like illnesses? Again, no. As of today, is K R M... As of today, is K R M C capable of treating all patients without crisis care? Yes. The answer is absolutely yes. As of today, are inpatient and ICU beds for potential COVID patients less than 70% full? Yes. As of today, has K R M C experienced any staff shortages in two months due to COVID-like illness? No. As of today, does K R M C currently possess P P E supplies for potential COVID-like illness adequate for greater than 15 days? Yes. We do not, there was a question that was just asked about Bullhead and Lake Havasu's medical centers experiencing, you know, increases in usage of hospital facilities. We do not have that answer, so. Yes, yep.
Timber?
So when we sent it, we asked them since the council adopted the mandate. So over the last month is what we've asked.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Manager Foggan.
You're welcome.
That's mostly good news.
For our hospital and for the people that need to use it.
Exactly how we want to keep.
It's great news. And then as part of the question and answer piece, I would just follow up in that, in getting those questions answered, which we really appreciate K R M C providing, they provided a little bit of information that they would also asked, that we share with the answers. So if I could just share that. So they wrote, "We appreciate the opportunity to represent the Kingman Regional Medical Center to share our experience regarding masking precautions against COVID-19. From the outset, we would like to distinguish between scientific data and public policy. We hope to provide some objective facts, which the council decides, what the council decides to do with that information is a separate issue. Information surrounding COVID changes rapidly, and this was particularly true at the beginning of the pandemic. Masking was viewed as something specific to eastern countries. This was, there was a confusion surrounding the mode of transmission. There was frankly confusion about a lot of things. Since then, things have become clearer. The visibility of the virus, of the viability, sorry, the viability of the virus is better understood. The mode of transmission was largely established, and the usefulness of masks was demonstrated. The virus is transmitted primarily in a direct person-to-person manner. It occurs in close contact with respiratory droplets. These droplets are small liquid particles that escape the mouth and nose while talking, coughing, singing, or sneezing. They are constantly leaving us. Small droplets are lighter and remain in the air longer. This is what is meant by aerosolization. And if the droplets make contact with mucus membranes, they can be infectious. Droplets touching hands, which then touch the nasal cavity, nasal membrane, sorry, mucus membrane, such as eyes or mouth or nose can also cause infection. The science surrounding masking is not in dispute. Masking decreases transmission of the virus, both by decreasing the aerosol particles and the droplets on surfaces, thereby diminishing contact transmission. This has been demonstrated both in laboratory studies and practically. Communities which mask early suffered a much lower burden of disease. And they finalize it by saying, "We appreciate the opportunity to weigh in and provide the clinical information which might inform your discussion."
Thank you, Manager Foggan. So that was from K R M C?
Yes. That was drafted by Cheryl Porter.
Thank you. Okay. We do have some people that have responded to the request or the opportunity to speak to council or to write comments to council. And so at this time, because it's short and sweet, I'll just ask Annie to report on those that have submitted comments to the city council. These comments have been put into the public record. They've been made available to the council today. And I think the council's had an opportunity to review them. And as I say, they're in the public record and they will be available for those who would like to see them in the minutes of this meeting. So Annie, if you could just give us a synthesis of the comments that we've received on this.
We received, for item 4B, we received 78 total written comments by this morning's cutoff. Seventy-four of those comments were in support of the mask mandate, and four of those comments were in opposition of the mask mandate.
Thank you, Annie. So are there any call-ins that are signed up to speak on this?
I do have two people waiting to call in or waiting to be entered in. I apologize. The first one is Ethan Benson.
Okay.
Mr. Benson, you have been entered into the meeting.
Mr. Benson, can you hear us? Could you, we think you're on mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Benson. Give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ethan Benson, Kingman, Arizona. I call on this council to end the mask proclamation. The science and facts agree that masks do not work to control viruses. After months of universal mask-wearing in many parts of the country and the world, the virus is still spreading. Japan, Hong Kong, Israel, France, Peru, the Philippines, UK, Spain, Hawaii, Alabama, California, and Miami are just a few examples with prolific spread long after very strict mandates and high compliance were in place. We were told to listen to the experts. Dr. Russell Blalock, a board-certified neurosurgeon, writes, "A recent careful examination of the literature, in which 17 of the best studies were analyzed, concluded that none of the studies established a conclusive relationship between mask use and protection against influenza infection. No studies have been done with masks and COVID, so we must use studies on influenza." Next, we turn to Dr. Scott Atlas of the White House Coronavirus Task Force, who also states that masks do not work to control viruses and are in fact harmful to healthy people. He cites the same real-world data I just mentioned, as well as the WHO and CDC, who until both, until very recently, maintained the same position. On the other hand, our county health director in September 21st's board meeting cited Bill Nye the Science Guy in support of mask use. I think that this is exactly what Swedish epidemiologist Anders Tegnell refers to as astonishingly weak evidence in support of masking. And at the September 15th council meeting, she cited declining cases in Mojave County as a triumph for mask mandates. However, had you looked at the equivalent graph for Yabai County, which has no mandates in its largest cities, you'll find the exact same trend line, but an even lower overall case count than we have. Yabai County without mask mandates has and continues to perform better in COVID than Mojave. On September 15th, Bullhead City abolished their mask mandate, and Lake Havasu followed shortly thereafter. Despite prognostications of doom, they are still doing fine. If they admit the bedroom are spreading this, then so has Kingman. Universal masking has done nothing to slow the virus. All it is doing is spreading fear and anxiety in the population and enabling a pretense for endless emergency and the powers that go with it. The CDC recently admitted that suicides are killing more people than COVID. The endless propagation of fear and endless war on small businesses was killing people, not the 99.9% survivable and treatable COVID-19. At yesterday's county board meeting, Sheriff Schuster said, "We are now seeing the endgame of lockdowns, of masks. Our suicide rates are extreme compared to where they were this time last year. Our domestic violence is extreme. Our people are not doing well under these mandates." If it saves just one life lost to suicide, to end these mandates, should we not end them? If it relieves unneeded stress and fear of just one person, to end these mandates, should we not end them? As the president and his top coronavirus advisor, Dr. Scott Atlas, said, "The masks and the six-feet ritual do not work. It's time to recognize that there is no reason to hide from this virus, nor do we have the ability to do so anyway." Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you. Mr. Benson? The next person that we have signed up to speak is Rebecca Williams.
Ms. Williams, you're in the meeting?
Ms. Williams, can you hear us? You may be on mute. Ms. Williams, can you hear us? Please check and make sure you're not on mute.
She's not muted.
She's not muted. Ms. Williams, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, we can hear you. Ms. Williams, please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Alrighty, my name is Rebecca Williams. I live in the city of Kingman. So, good evening, first of all, mayor and council. I think we've all had more than enough time to reflect on these matters today. I do ask that you all consider the validity of the claim that keeps this mandate in place, that the evidence clearly shows masks have helped our numbers. To assume numbers go down because it is around the same time that a mask mandate was put in place is bad science, if science at all. Especially when you consider all these other places that don't have mask mandates, and they end up following the same case trends. What that evidence actually suggests is that it made no difference at all. However, what would make sense, instead of putting so much time and effort into public campaigns trying to convince people to wear masks, put that time and energy into informing people how to be healthier. Considering COVID is only deadly to the unhealthy, this would seem a more logical approach. Of course, there are some scenarios where being unhealthy is not a result of personal choices. And in such cases, I would imagine these people have always known they are more easily compromised. I would also imagine they don't regularly expect people to wear masks for them before COVID came around and it became a norm anyway. Let's suggest people supplement with vitamin D, C, and zinc, and see what happens. America's frontline doctors just had another summit, this time in front of the Supreme Court of the United States. They are again urging the American people to do the research and stop living in fear. Everyone needs to visit AmericasFrontlineDoctors.com. That's AmericasFrontlineDoctors.com, and hear from our health experts the facts. They also cite links to their research and studies. Everyone talking about the concern of when does this all end? And the only answer I could gather is that in a nutshell, we will be waiting for the state to say we're okay. And I just don't think that's good enough. It seems incredibly concerning that a Department of Public Health, whose director we do not vote in as the people, is going to determine how we live our lives. I would ask you all start thinking critically about taking our own actions outside of waiting for the state to tell us what we can and can't do. We could certainly partner with other cities in the state. I fear we will never get our lives back, and allowing this sort of bureaucracy now will only invite bad intentions of the leaders of our future. You all have a role to play as our leaders now to ensure not only a bright today, but a bright future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We also have two speakers signed up to speak here today. And the first one will be Representative Regina Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmen, for allowing me to address the mask mandate, item 4B on your action items today. The first time I addressed this, council was addressing mainly the AG's opinion on not following statute, as well as the action itself. The second time, it was to address the mandate and the arbitrary date for the extension of the mandate, which I felt did not fall within guidelines as an emergency. I also cited Judge Stickman in the recent Pennsylvania case citing, "But even in an emergency, the authority of government is not to be unfettered. The Constitution cannot accept the new normal, where the basic liberties of people subordinated to open-ended emergency mitigation measures, rather than the Constitution sets clear guidelines that may not be crossed," unquote. I ask you today, each council member, to look within yourself and ask yourself, "Are you violating the basic liberties of our general public?" The state's data shows we have stayed within normal cases from September 1st. We have not gone up. We have leveled off. The upticks and downticks still have given, have been going on, but they're still leveling off. The ICU beds occupied and the deaths are at the lowest since before April 1st. I am not here today to debate the effectiveness of masks. We will find sufficient studies on both sides to accept or deny. Whether it's causation or correlation, I don't know. But I am sure that it does violate our personal liberties. I am only here today to debate the mandate itself and how I feel government is overreaching within this council. Studies are often, are often, what you were talking about earlier, sir, about banning observation rather than actually doing controlled studies. And we haven't had enough time to do a lot of controlled studies. I think overreach is a violation of our liberties that is unwarranted. And as the mayor and the council, I have never given, has never given us criteria for severing the mandate. But instead, are governing by fear. We have children out there who are doing gymnastics that have to wear masks. I mean, their peripheral vision is limited. The communities surrounding us, like Capes and Bullhead City, have discontinued the emergency measures without consequences. And of the tri-city, we had the lowest numbers of all of them. So the mayor's arguments last time about all the cities are doing it just doesn't hold water. Data is also included in the schools. The data that we have, we have increased because I think we have data that comes across the nation with schools opening. And it still has stabilized with that. So I ask you today to do not vote on, vote no on the ratification of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Cobb. Thank you, Annie. We have one more speaker, and that is Dr. Bennett. Good evening, Dr. Bennett. If you could give us your name and address or city, and you have three minutes.
Deborah Bennett. I live in Kingman, 32.
Yeah, we're gonna have to pull that microphone way down.
Challenge by my height. Deborah Bennett, 3828 Kings, or?
You have to get very close, like this. Very close.
Deborah Bennett, better. 3828 Katie Lane Loop, I live in Kingman. And I just, I welcome the opportunity just to speak. I didn't plan anything. I was taking care of our COVID patients and others. I just want to really ask everyone to think from your heart. This is not a red, a blue, a rights. My, your rights, and where it's harmful to me. And that's what I tell patients. They want to come in, they don't want to wear a mask. And I'll say, "Well, I'm asking you to do it to protect me. And you would want me to, because you don't know where I've been in the last eight hours." I need to just tell everyone that it is there. I can't address the graphs. If I had time, I probably could tell you the validity. But I can tell you what I see in our state. I can tell you what I see in our cities. We've had kids that just barely pulled through two months ago. We had to fly them out to children's. Same time I was, I had seen people that were not masking with kids. It is your right. But I would think we could just put that aside for a couple of months to protect each other. I am just appalled. I mean, I've had, my patient the other day said that I was one of those no-maskers. I almost took down a lady at Walmart because I wasn't going to wear a mask. And then he got it, and his wife got it. And they were told they had a 50/50 chance of pulling through. He said, "I would go to that city council meeting and I would let them know, but I'm working." He improved. But it took him out of work for almost six weeks. Almost lost their home. Almost lost their home. I mean, so there's a lot of domino effects that go along with this. And I see the harm that it does to the community. But I'm speaking just from a medical point of view. This little piece of cloth can help prevent the spread. To what extent, I don't know. But we have buried people from Kingman. We have had people that say they'll never be the same after having this. And hopefully, a year from now, we're going to look back and say, "We were successful. We passed this." But I'm just asking you to work together as a community. Kingman KRC doesn't look that they sent anyone, although they sent some information. And I need to tell you, we have a doctor shortage in our community. We're actually 50% short on physicians. Some of it supplemented by nurse practitioners. But I need to tell you, we have one or two critical care specialists. And I tell my patients, "If you make me sick," whether it's the typical Kingman crud, pneumonia, or whatever it is, "we will be out of work. We won't be here to take care of your family." So please just consider the medical aspects. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett.
Dr. Bennett, if I may have, can I just ask one question? From your perspective, from the medical perspective, what is the logical end of the mask mandate?
The logical end for the near future?
No, to get rid of the mandate. In your view, what is the logical end to it?
The initial goal by Dr. Fauci and CDC and WHO, back before all the compromise, was that we would obtain the same percentage as influenza has, and it's usually about 3%. So we're not that far. But I'm going to tell you that it's going to be blurred in the next couple of months. We're going to have influenza A and B, and some Corona, and it's all going to look like the same. So for a couple of months, it's going to be really difficult to tell because we're going to just be flooded with upper respiratory and a lot of illness. So we won't see that 3%. It'll probably be closer to, don't cringe, January or so. We've got to get through the next couple of months where our normal cycles of the kiddie viruses, because they're going to get it, they aren't COVID, but they will look sick, and parents are going to panic. The ER is going to be flooded. Our ER is currently under renovation. We do have, right outside where I'm working, we have a COVID line. You go through the website, you get an appointment, and you come. They're lining up four or five cars deep for four hours. And this is not during a height. So I think that we probably, and this is not, Travis, this is not with any data. I'm just saying from what I see. In the normal cycle in Kingman, we get pretty ill here. We have, you know, the Kingman upper respiratory and pneumonias that go through. So people are going to start panicking because they're going to think they have COVID, and they don't. So the data is not going to be real clear for a while. So I think the endpoint is probably going to be, once we pass a couple of months where the worst of the infection is gone, then we'll be able to see clearly where the COVIDs come up. And these masks do prevent, if I were to cough or sneeze and I had pneumonia brewing, I would protect you. So let's just protect each other. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Dr. Bennett, now I have a question. What is your, do you see the correlation between all the information that's coming out about vaccines and better treatments? Being a possibility that that's going to really influence the, kind of the endpoint where we get to where it is contained at 3% or less?
Absolutely, but it's time. Phase 3 trials usually take six to nine to 12 months. You cannot rush them. Two or three of our big manufacturers have called a halt to their programs because of deaths and unusual occurrences that weren't predicted. But that is the predictable part of a phase 3 trial. You try, you make assessments, and you change your path. We just have to give it the right amount of time. I can't say for sure, but to expect a phase 3 trial to be run through in six months is ridiculous. It just, it can't be done because it's time. It's time effective. And then you have to test for antibodies. We don't know if there was a couple sets of antibodies now. We don't know if the antibodies last. So there's just too much that's unknown. So we just need to give it time. And I really do think that the next couple of months are just important for preventing spread and infection in our community. Not just COVID, but all of it. And the data is going to be mixed. You know the computer saying junk in, junk out? Well, for a couple of months, it's not going to be really clear because we're going to have so much, and a lot of patients will be called back. Do you know that the, most of the COVID testing that we do, whether it's PCR or this rapid test, people stay positive for 90 days. So if you get it, you're positive for 90 days. And if you get sick again, we really can't test because you're already still positive. So there's a lot of this with the testing. It's going to improve. It's going to be tighter, controlled. But right now, we don't have that.
Are you saying the masks do help spread, limit the spread of all of it? And thus ease the burden on the healthcare system?
Well, it does. Can you imagine if Dr. Win, Dr. Matheny, got this? Our critical care would be shut down. We'd have to hire people to come in. They were doing telephone appointments during March, April, and May. They weren't seeing people. And let me tell you, it's very difficult to evaluate someone without looking in their throat, listening to their lungs, and seeing how much fluid they're retaining. Over the phone is a sad second best. And we need to keep our healthcare providers, including me, healthy.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes all of the speakers that have signed up for this. And I appreciate everyone's comments, and now I would open the floor for council discussion.
Madam Mayor, I have a few questions.
Go ahead, Councilman Wade.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay? Okay. So these questions are for the city. I know a lot of the questions that I had have been answered, but I might need some clarification with respect to some of the levels that we spoke about earlier. After asking a few questions, I may have some follow-up comments and maybe a few additional questions depending on responses. But so, one of the questions I have deals with the levels that Manager Foggan has referenced with respect to the state. So I heard mention of moderate levels, and it seems that we are currently in that range. I'm guessing that the levels that surround moderate would be low and high. Those weren't discussed, but that's what I'm assuming that they are labeled. So if I heard correctly, we are currently in the moderate level. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And do we know the percentage ranges of the moderate level?
It's between 5 and 10%.
And then, so our level, did I hear 8% is where we're at right now? Or is that where we were at prior to the mandate?
So it's just based on number of cases per 1,000. Or, I mean, not 1,000, 100,000, sorry. So it's number of cases per 100,000. And for basic, for the basic math, that means that to be in the lowest range, we have to have, if we had 100,000 people, we have to be below 10 cases for two straight weeks.
Okay. And we're currently at 8%, is that correct?
So I don't know what the exact percentage is. I just know that in the county's report last Thursday, that we were at 20 cases per 100,000.
Councilwoman Wade, I think you're referring to what I said on the positivity rate, which was 8.5.
Yeah, that's different.
But the moderate and minimal zones refer to what are on the Arizona Department of Health Services website under, I think they're the business benchmarks, they're called. And they are defined there, and then there are certain criteria that are associated with them that affect business and how fully they can open, depending on what range you're in.
Okay, and so just to be clear, above 10% would put us in a high range, at which point the state would come in and start shutting businesses down? Is that, is that correct?
We understand that after two weeks of being in the high range, that that is the case.
Okay, and then, but we don't know what percentage we are at currently?
Well, as far as spread, we don't know. As far as what the governor has outlined for what can be reopened and where moderate is, high, moderate, and low, we're in the moderate range, averaging 20 cases per 100,000.
And any mandates that come down from the state, or any closures that come down, would they impose those closures or sanctions upon the county or the individual cities?
They're imposed on the businesses.
Right, but when they characterize an area based on its percentage to put them in a range, whether it be low, moderate, or high, do they take the percentage of the county? Or do they take percentage?
Yes, it's county.
Okay.
It's not separated by jurisdiction. We are hooked at the hip with Bullhead, Havasu, and the rest of Mojave County.
Okay. Okay, so our fates are tied with respect to the potential for additional closures that come down on a state level, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, do we know how Kingman ranks nationally in terms of infection rates and death rates?
I do not know that.
Okay. Some of these questions will be, I guess the purpose of some of these questions will be in furtherance of an issue that I had brought up at the last meeting. It's an issue that Regina Cobb has brought up a few times, and she touched on it today. One of the things that I was hoping to see at this meeting was the possibility of including some objective criteria that have the function of, I guess, severing the mandate or tying, you know, ending the mandate based on criteria that, you know, that we can either work toward or that, you know, we eventually just gravitate towards. So I know that that is difficult based on the fact that, you know, we have a a virus that's fairly new and that we know little about. I guess we're learning new things every day. But I have a few more questions that were somewhat covered by the presentation with respect to Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City's rates. I did see the graph, but it was difficult to kind of distinguish the numbers specifically. And the graph was only up for a little bit of time. But with, how are, how is Kingman compared with Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City based on, you know, rates of infection?
So, in the last week, based on the graph, the last graph, the spread in, according to the county and the numbers that they're receiving, Lake Havasu over the last week is at approximately 7.5% positivity rates. Bullhead is about 4%, and the city of Kingman is about 2.5%.
And do we have numbers for the death rates? And just to be clear, these numbers are, you said you got them within the last week. So that would mean that these numbers are based on numbers that were collected after Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City got rid of their mask mandate, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, do we have numbers for the, for death rates?
Are you asking for death rates or number of deaths in the last week? I think we've had very few in the last week.
Yeah.
I mean, like...
As far as I know...
I think I saw one or maybe two.
There's been a couple over the last couple of weeks. That's it. That I, as I recall from the county's daily report.
Okay.
So I'm showing, sorry, Counselor, first.
Go ahead.
I have deaths in September. And it's showing that there were, let's see, five total deaths.
And that's county-wide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, so I have another question, and this might not be answerable, or the answer would likely be that we wouldn't know that, we'd have to speculate. But I don't know if we've considered to what degree the removal of a mask mandate would have effect on people actually wearing a mask. I can see people on, I can kind of see both sides to that. I think that to some degree, there will be, there would be a percentage of people who say, "Okay, well, I'm no longer required to do this, so it's uncomfortable. I don't want to do it." On the other hand, I also see that there are those who, when they're, when they feel that their liberty is being taken away and not, you know, doing something out of the kindness of their heart, people's, some people have a tendency to put their foot down rather than, you know, do something that perhaps they should do just out of kindness or out of caring for others. But do we, do we have any idea as to what degree the removal of the mask mandate would have or what effect it might have percentage-wise? I mean, I know Bullhead City and Havasu have, you know, obviously removed their mask mandate. I wonder if we, if there's any way to calculate what what effect it has had on people's willingness to mask up in public places?
That's not, that's not an answer that we have, Counselor.
Okay, and I assume that might be just something that that we'd have to either speculate or ask people's opinion about because, you know, shopping in Bullhead or Havasu, you know, people might say, "Well, it appears that less people are wearing them," or "It appears that nothing has changed." So that was my question, is if we anticipate that there will be a significant change in the individuals who choose to wear masks versus choose to no longer wear them? And also, what effect it might have on a business who might otherwise impose the mask anyway?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that in two years from now.
Right, I expect that.
Plus, I will mention that I believe that, based on a conversation I've had with the Lake Havasu mayor, that he's noted a marked decrease. I don't think anyone knows the percentage. But, and there's really no way to. But just on anecdotal data and observation, I think that is an observation that has been made.
And then, out of curiosity, do we know if Lake Havasu City or Bullhead City, when they removed their mask mandate, if they made any attempt to convert the mandate into, you know, some sort of resolution or, you know, that the city resolves to, or that the city encourages, you know, the citizens to continue to wear masks? Do we know if they made any attempt to that effect?
So I know that Mayor Shihi asked that people continue to wear it. I don't know what Bullhead has done. I've not talked to Toby or the mayor in Bullhead to see if they did a mask campaign to encourage people to continue. My guess would be that they have, but I don't know that.
Okay. And I did want to also, you know, point out that I appreciate the the information provided to us from KRC. You know, they're on the front lines of all of this, and, you know, they're the ones putting themselves at risk every day. And I, you know, I think that it's a brave, courageous effort that they're putting forward. it's a, it's a brave, courageous effort that they, that they're putting forward. And I appreciate the information they, they're providing us because I'm not a, an expert in this field, so I basically have to go with, you know, what, what is being told to me and, and what I feel, you know, is correct. We've also, you know, we've heard studies on both sides from, you know, just about everybody. And for me, the question is not necessarily, you know, whether or not masks have some effect. I think that the science is pretty clear, that it can reduce the risk of contracting and spreading COVID. But the question to me is, to what degree does it help? And at what point should the government step in and intervene through the force of law? And, you know, I think a clear and simple comparison is with the common flu. You know, there are a certain amount of people who contract the flu, you know, and even, you know, die from the flu every year. And I'm sure that if every American wore masks all day, every day for the rest of our lives, you know, I'm sure that it would have an effect on the amount of people who contract the flu and the people, the amount of people who die from the flu. So at some point, you know, I think that we have made, you know, we've drawn a line in the sand to say, you know, we're not willing to wear masks every day for the rest of our lives to, you know, save, you know, people, everyone from dying from the, the, the standard, you know, flu. So, you know, that's kind of the point that I was trying to make at the last meeting was that, you know, I think we can draw a line somewhere with respect to, you know, at what point where we want to accept, you know, whatever risk so that we can, you know, provide for the, for the well-being of the residents. You know, we don't want to overstep, but I think we do have, you know, authority to protect people, you know, in this regard. So I do have a couple of legal questions. I don't know if Carl should answer them or if they can be answered by you, Manager Foggan. But with respect to the current proclamation, you know, I'm wondering what enforcement mechanisms we have in place to ensure that this mandate is being observed or enforced? And, you know, I assume that there aren't any and that we wouldn't impose, you know, sanctions on people who we find have violated this mandate. And my, my follow-up question to that is if the city imposes laws, you know, without any intention of enforcing those laws, to what extent are we undermining the rule of law? You know, and, and does the proclamation have the potential to set the city up for lawsuits, you know, in a civil aspect? If a person is able to, you know, track their infection somehow to the city or a city function or a city building or a property, you know, are we opening up ourselves to some form of civil liability by neglecting to enforce, you know, the mandate that we, that we have imposed? You know, and if, and on a, you know, on another level, if a small business is sued because it, it made no reasonable effort to comply with the mask mandate that we've imposed, you know, and someone claimed that they became infected at that location, what effect does it have on, on that small business? And, and, you know, even if the small business wins a lawsuit, you know, who pays their legal fees or, or fronts, you know, them money as they, they're slowly paid back over the course of several years in the event that they're able to get a, a judge to agree to have the plaintiff pay for legal fees? So, so I have some concerns about the, the civil ramifications of imposing a mandate and having no mechanism or, or intention of enforcing that.
So would you like me to try and handle that one?
I play one on TV, but I think I'll let you do it.
Sure. So the, the first question about the enforceability, as, as, I guess, as you read, as you go through the proclamation, you'll note that what we're listing is an educational campaign. The idea is to strongly urge and educate those individuals out in public to wear the mask. We're not looking at making any type of an attempt to charge anybody criminally. That was not the intent of this, this mandate. The idea was to, to encourage people to wear this, this mask. And then, like I say, we've, I think law enforcement has taught to several businesses, but that again, tho, those seem to revolve more around the, the state level requirements during this issue with the governor's executive orders. Trying to look at the civil aspect of it, I don't see an increased level of liability towards the city having or not having a mask mandate. This is something that, you know, is a public health emergency, and the city's doing its best to, to control what we can control to reduce those risks to the individuals. But in the end, you know, anybody can file a claim for any reason against whoever they want, but they can file a claim against the city of Kingman. And what we will do is we would process it like we file any other claim that's been made against the city of Kingman. But I don't necessarily see an increased risk because we're not locking up people not wearing masks.
Okay, and I, I agree with you in the, in the aspect, in the, in the aspect of, you know, they're likely, you know, there, there could be civil ramifications or lawsuits either way, whether or not it's a mandate or, or if no mandate is, is proposed. But you mentioned that it's, it's more of an educational campaign and that the city has no intention of charging people criminally. And my question is, so it basically has no legal teeth or any, you know, sanctions that we would intend to impose if someone were to violate that? So I guess, you know, I assume that there are practical differences between a, a mandate that we have no intention of enforcing and, you know, some form of resolution or, or encouragement by the city in the form of an official, you know, document. But the legal, to, to me, the, the legal effects would be the same. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I, I understand where you're talking or what you're, how you're approaching that. I would say that with the mandate, there's probably still a stronger force even without an actual hook 'em up and book 'em aspect of it. What it does is it, again, it, it puts that mandate in effect, and people are more likely to be compelled to comply with it, which is a benefit to the society, as well as providing some backup information or backup structure for those businesses that are really trying hard to make sure that they're protecting their customers, their employees, whether or not this is just based on the, the city's proclamation or the governor's executive orders or their own corporate policies.
Could I add something? Counselor, could I just add something?
Sure.
I, when we crafted this, we discussed having punitive elements to it and did not want to do that at this time. And, you know, there are places in other states and whatnot that have them associated with mandates, but we did not want to go that route. We did not. But when you say there's no enforcement, I, I kind of don't think that's right because when people call, and they do, and say, you know, so it's, people aren't wearing masks or whatnot, we have the ability to go in, in a official capacity and educate and talk to the management, and they may not even be aware of some of the things that are required of businesses, and not just from the city, because most of the things, many of the requirements are not from the city. So I do see the merit, and, and as I said, Havasu is doing a great campaign on educating and, and asking people to wear masks. It's, but there is a consistency to the policy. If we as a council say we are going to keep a consistent policy with our schools, with our healthcare facilities, with many of the businesses that have their own corporate policies or store policies, and it gives a, a uniform, consistent policy that people don't have to wonder about what's required. We just are all together on the same page, protecting each other and helping each other get through this. And as to when it's over, I think that there's been plenty of discussion that says nobody has a date, but we certainly know that as things are lightening up, as the cases go down and down, things are opening up, things will continue to lighten up. And when everybody starts loosening up the schools and the healthcare facilities and say, okay, we're, we're, we're getting down to a contained epidemic, if you will. It's like the, when you get to the point where it does have numbers that are more like the flu, I think that's when there'll be plenty of evidence that everybody's ready to lift some requirements. Right now, I just see it as a consistent policy decision for the council, to be consistent with a lot of businesses, not just the large corporate ones, but the small ones that have told me, I need, okay, there are rules that my, my employees have to wear masks, but I want everybody coming in here to wear a mask. And the city's proclamation helps me do that without being the bad guy. So I'm just saying, there are, there are elements that make it meaningful, I think, rather than unnecessary.
And, well, and I, I can see the merit in that. I can see that there is a, an additional element of, of compulsion. I'm not, I mean, I, I think that people have a tendency to, when there's a mandate in place, even if they know that we have no intention of enforcing that, you know, there's a stronger urge to, to follow that, I, I assume. That being said, you know, I know a lot of people have a lot of questions or comments, but, you know, at the end of this, if, if, if the council were on board, you know, I'd be prepared to propose or support converting the, the current mandate from a proclamation to, you know, a resolution containing all the cautions and warnings and suggestions contained in the current proclamation. You know, considering the fact that we really have no enforcement mechanisms by which to impose the proclamation in the first place, you know, a resolution, in my opinion, would have a similar effect. But in the alternative, you know, if the council doesn't go for that, you know, I would consider setting reasonable objective criteria, you know, that trigger, triggers the, or severs or suspends the mandate based on information that we do have, you know. I know someone came in and, and mentioned, it was a doctor, and I apologize for not remembering her name, but she mentioned that the percentages of the influenza were about three percent, and the goal is to try to get towards that, that percentage. And as I stated, we've obviously drawn a line with respect to our willingness to, to put ourselves at risk and retain our, you know, certain freedoms. And that line, at least for the flu, is at least the three percent or maybe slightly higher. But, you know, if we can at least consider some kind of criteria, you know, assuming that the council does not support converting the mandate from a proclamation to a resolution, you know, at least some, some kind of criteria, because, you know, I would expect that if the city is going to impose a mandate that curtails the freedoms or the well-being of the residents, you know, in the name of public safety, it would need to be narrowly tailored and frequently analyzed to ensure that the decision-making process, you know, is up, based on up-to-date information or, you know, an objective data that we receive on a recurring basis. So, you know, if we were to readdress it, you know, frequently to ensure that we're not curtailing people's freedoms on a, you know, gut feeling, like, oh, we'll remove this mandate when it feels right, you know, I think that's what makes some people nervous. I think that, you know, Regina Cobb kind of touched on that as well, that, you know, people don't just want to say, okay, overlords, let us know when it's okay to, to do what we, you, let's just make some objective criteria so that we know what we're looking at and what we are aiming toward, is, is all I'm saying.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Watkins.
Thank you, mayor. I sort of, maybe Councilman Wade, I think you bring up some good points. Unfortunately, as human beings or trying to be law-abiding citizens, when we put, as a governing council, when we put a mandate out, people take that as law. And they worst-case it, meaning they're expecting a penalty. If there is law, they're expecting it to be a law. And so having a mandate without penalties, like Carl said in his own words, is strong encouragement. So maybe we ratchet it down, one idea would be to ratchet it down to either a strong resolution, strong encouragement, and that way, people don't feel like we are taking away their civil liberties. And, and we have to respect that also. I'm torn on this because talking to both sides, it's, it's basically fifty-fifty. I know Annie gave us some numbers, but I know when I've been out talking to individuals, they, most of them are respectful, and if a business asks them to wear a mask, they will. But do they want to wear a mask? Most of the time, they don't. But they just feel like their civil liberties are being taken away by having a mandate, even though, as we have said, there's no teeth in it, people still worst-case it and think it's law. And so I think we need to consider that.
Madam Mayor? May I?
Yes, mayor.
You know, we did hear, as one of the speakers mentioned, or maybe they're on the phone, from Sheriff Schuster recently. And really, when you look at what's happened over the last eight months, there are three concurrent but separate crises, I think, playing out at the same time. There's a public health crisis, there's an economic crisis, and then there's a social crisis as well with the suicides and things like that. And none of us have the leisure or the pleasure, or maybe not the pleasure, of looking at things solely through the public health lens. I think that each one of those three crises are, from a policymaking standpoint, equally important. And I think that there has to be a balanced approach or as close to a balanced approach as we can because we represent everybody with all those, with all views. The data that we saw tonight, Kingman is the lowest positivity rate in Mojave County right now. We have a 2.9% positivity rate right now, as of today. Is that correct? Is that what you, that's what you reported? So personally, I'm not a fan of blank check mandates. I, I believe that emergency mandates must be as narrowly tailored as possible, as short as possible, and they have to be explicitly tied to clear criteria for the end of the emergency mandate. Right now, our mandate doesn't have any criteria at all. Is, is it, we wait till everybody gets vaccinated? Do we wait till? I, it's not clear. It's not in writing. Eight months later, we know a lot more about the disease than we did when we first had this come to our country. We know that where the real risk is. We know that extraordinary health measures must remain focused and continue in places like congregate settings. If it gets in there, it's devastating. We all know that. And when you look at really removing the local mandate, you know, I think that that would definitely remove much of the local acrimony that exists, but I don't think that it would really change much practically. And the reason I say that is because the governor's order and individual store policies are still going to be in effect, right? And people get to choose where they eat and shop. There are currently many options for grocery and restaurant, curbside pickup. And I think all private businesses also retain the right privately to refuse service if that becomes necessary. That should cover everybody. I think no matter what happens tonight, that people should still seek privately the professional advice from their family primary care physician. I don't think that we should rely on our government to tell us personal health choices because the government doesn't know our pre-existing physicians, it doesn't know any of that stuff. What's really important, I believe, is the very person. What's really important, I believe, is the very personal relationship between a primary care physician and a family. And that's the evidence that you should, or the advice you should be taking. And a lot of them will probably recommend, my doctor recommended, in a packed setting to mask up. I don't need the government to tell me to do that. I can do that on my own by talking to my doctor. So I think that it could be converted tonight to a strong recommendation from a public education standpoint, to say, you know, based upon what we know eight months later, you know, we still strongly recommend that you do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councillor Malo Keener.
Like all of us, I have had many constituents reach out to me and voice their opinion. And I'm going to be voting accordingly. But I am very worried for our little town, very worried. And I just, you know, strongly encourage the community to continue with the hand sanitizing, the hand washing, the wearing of the masks, and then also to be respectful, you know, those that don't choose to wear the mask, those that do, just, you know, Kingman needs to be Kingman again. And that is a very strong community, and I just hope that we can get there again.
Thank you. Councillor Scott Staley or Councillor Nelson?
Yeah, I'd like to go next. So, this is, you know, this is a very difficult thing. And I would say that what we need to remember is the only thing within our control when it comes to coronavirus is we can wear masks, we can wash our hands, and we can socially distance, and that's it. So I have some real concerns about downgrading this to a proclamation because that is exactly what Havasu has done. I was in Havasu on Saturday. I saw very few people wearing masks there. I was in three different stores. There was not a lot of compliance. And the graph that we saw earlier from Mr. Foggan that he shared with us from the county, you know, it does show that cases are going up, although I would say it is too early to really say that that is a trend and it's going to continue to go up due to their change in the map from a mask mandate to a mass proclamation, but you can't deny that you do see an increase. And not only from those increases will we see more cases, sickness, death, but we're also going to see businesses being shut down again, which I know none of us want to see, and we don't want to have, we don't want to have a hand in that. And we're going to see our schools shut down again, and these kids just got to go back to school. So I would just ask everybody to think about whether or not we want to take that chance right now. So that is my real concern.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Nelson, did you want to say anything about this?
May as well step in. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. You know, I, Kingman is a really strong little community that has a great deal of people who have amazing opinions. And at this stage of the game, most of them are wishing to have their own voice heard, and they're not being heard. I definitely know my constituents are not feeling that they've been heard. And that's really frustrating for them at this stage. We've got businesses that are looking around, and since Bullhead and Havasu opened up, they've seen a decrease. Where are the people going? Well, they're going to Bullhead and Havasu. They're not shopping here. That's just happening. Those are things on an economic level that we have to think about. Do I agree with masks? No, I haven't agreed with them since day one, but that's my opinion. I think we're all entitled to our opinion, and at this stage of the game, we shouldn't be telling people. I agree with Vice Mayor Lincolnfelter. This is a situation where have a conversation with your doctor. I agree with Councilwoman Malo Keener. Be respectful. Quit being mean. Quit being nasty. Quit being hateful. And I truly do believe that part of all of that is this mandate. People are angry right now because of this mandate. They feel like they've been told what to do by an entity that has no right to tell you for that. So, that being said, I think everybody knows where I will be voting, and I just do not agree with the mandate at all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other discussion?
Just real quick, Mayor, I almost said, Your Honor, which is a compliment to you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that the last thing that I want to see are businesses and schools shut down again. I think that is a nightmare and would completely destroy the local economy. I think, like I said, I think that people should be wearing masks. I think that they help. I will still be wearing them. I am grateful that my employer requires us to wear masks and has us protect each other and each other's families. And, you know, I imagine that if the numbers, you know, if the council were to proceed with, you know, a resolution rather than a proclamation, and, you know, I would just like to see the people have an opportunity to do the right thing because that's something that they want to do. And that's a choice that they made rather than it being forced upon them. And, you know, if the numbers increase anywhere near the level that would cause a shutdown, I have no, I would have zero problems imposing a mask, another mask mandate to make sure that we don't get to those levels wherein, you know, it would cause, you know, catastrophic effects on our local businesses and the local economy. So that's kind of my position. But again, if the council were not prepared tonight to convert the proclamation to a resolution, then, you know, I'm open to hearing suggestions regarding objective criteria wherein we can basically sever the mandate based on us getting to or near those levels. Again, the flu levels are 3%. Obviously, certainly 3% would be easy to say that, you know, that's a goal that we could sever the mandate, but I think it can be, it could even be higher just because, you know, we never drew that line at the flu, and I imagine there were some years wherein it was higher than 3%, maybe 5% or 6%. But again, I think that the main concern for me is the potential for businesses to close down again. Some of them barely survived and won't survive again if we were to get anywhere near the level where that would happen. So that's my biggest fear, and I'm afraid, part of me is afraid, to convert it from a proclamation to a resolution for that very reason, but, you know, I think that we do need to narrowly tailor any curtailment of freedom if we can. And if, again, if it comes to those levels, I wouldn't have a problem stepping in again, but that's just, that's all I had to say.
Councillor, if it gets to the levels where we have to revisit this, I will think that is a huge failure on everyone's part, really, but because that's lives that are lost and lives that are impacted that I hope will never happen. But it is a risk that is true. I do also fear that businesses will shut down. We're seeing it in other places. And while our governor has said that that's not his intent, it's still not a scenario that I want to see challenged by numbers escalating. It's also true that numbers are escalating in places where there are mandates, but guess what? I think there's COVID fatigue. I think people are relaxing, and that has consequences, but also it's just a very contagious virus. And to me, every step that we can take to help our community, help our businesses, help our schools, help our healthcare professionals stay healthy, I feel responsible that that is the right policy. I think for the economic reasons, for the, for the many people that have talked to me that said, you know, I feel safer knowing that people are wearing a mask when I go in the store. And when I hear that things have really dropped dramatically in Havasu in terms of mask wearing, I presume that's what's going to happen here. And it will make a difference to the safety and mental health of many of our people because we are an older population with a lot of people that are at risk. I did want to comment on the mental health, on suicides and things, because Sheriff has been referenced a number of times on that comment. But I think that, Vice Mayor, didn't you ask about that in Kingman recently, about the number of, the mental health statistics of suicide and domestic violence? I thought you asked the city manager.
I don't recall what the answer was, but I think I did.
Manager Foggan, do you remember that question being asked?
Yes.
And what was the, what was the information that we got?
We're not higher than 2019.
So we're not higher in suicides and we're not higher in mental health or in domestic violence?
Domestic violence, right.
So in Kingman, for whatever reason, we're fortunate in so many ways. I do think we have a really responsible population, citizenry, and people are trying to do the right things. And I was so thankful that we're not seeing that mental health meltdown in our city. And so, there are people that are angry, and there are people that are very vocal about their anger. And then there are groups of people that are just as passionate about, please keep the protection in place. We've heard some numbers tonight, and I know people too that feel both ways. Seriously, I have friends on both sides too. So I just have to look at what I believe is my role, my responsibility, and that is to prioritize the safety of every citizen in Kingman. I know I'm very unpopular for that in some quarters, because I don't want to limit anybody's civil liberties, but this is a simple little thing to do to save somebody's life. And it's astounding to me that this public health issue has become a political fireball. And I'm sorry that that has happened. So I don't know where the council will go with this tonight, and, but I know where, I feel my responsibility is. And because I don't feel that it is breaking the constitutional law, I really don't, I don't think it's really infringing on civil liberties because we have so many exemptions in that mandate for any type of health condition. And I know that some stores are more strict than others in enforcing this. But at the same time, I'm a big believer in a consistent voice across our businesses, our schools, our healthcare facilities, and the city. That's really where I live. So I think that's all my notes. Any other discussion? Then I'm interested in somebody making a motion. I would entertain a motion of some type. I, I feel, based on what I'm hearing, that it might be some type of motion I'm not expecting, but...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we remove the mandate, the mask mandate at this time.
I have a motion to remove the mask mandate at this time. Is there a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second to remove the mask mandate. I think we'll need a roll call vote.
Mayor, if there's some discussion...
Oh, is there a follow-up discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, of course. Let's have more discussion.
If I may, Mayor Miles.
Please, go ahead, councillor.
I, I think that the city has a duty or an obligation to sort of, I think that Lake Havasu City is kind of on the right track. I think that it's very important that people wear masks, and I think that it is very helpful. I don't want to abandon that or to give the impression that the city is any less serious on the, their support of a mask, you know, of people wearing masks. So if, I didn't make the motion, but if I were to have made the motion, I would have included more of, you know, converting the mandate from a proclamation to a resolution that would have contained all of the cautions and warnings and suggestions contained in the active proclamation. I don't know if Dina's would like to amend it, or if that is an issue we can discuss, you know, at some point in conjunction with this agenda item before it is closed, or if it's something that we can simply direct staff to do, I will leave that at your discretion.
Councillor Waite, thank you. I honestly do not feel that we should, we should adjust that, that motion. We can finalize the vote, we can finalize where it stands, and then we can look at our citizens and say, let's go back to being the good Kingman citizens that we are and that we know we are, and let's be respectful, let's be polite, let's do things the right way. I will be leaving my motion the way it is, please.
And then just as a follow-up, Mayor, I certainly wouldn't be prepared. So I guess my follow-up question would be to Manager Foggan or to Carl Cooper. And after this motion is voted upon, will this matter be, will it remain so that we can have more conversation about the possibility of including, of that conversion? Or is the matter completely done, and then there will be no more conversation about it?
I'm looking at the language. So the language of the agenda is council discussion, possible action on the mask mandate? I think if we go beyond the language there, basically if this motion moves or passes as moved, I think that ends the discussion.
Okay. And in that event, I don't think I'd be able to support such a motion, but I'll let that, the council make that decision.
Thank you, councillor. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councillor Watkins.
Thank you. David, you bring a point, and Mayor, and Carl, and everybody straightened me out. Obviously, if we voted, vote to do away with a mandate for today, two, three weeks, a month ago, numbers started going up. Once again, you could put an emergency mandate back in place as long as it's brought back to council, and we ratify it again after 72 hours, correct, or something like that?
I'm certainly not going to address that, councillor, because of the issues that have been surrounding my three days. I did extend it under legal advice that it was okay because of superseding state statute, and now that has been brought to our attention, that our counsel, our legal understanding was not correct, and I wouldn't touch it.
Well, okay, forget the three-day thing. But it could be, obviously, one of us could suggest it and bring it back forward again, I would think, right?
Of course.
So it's not, not like we're saying, no, we're never going to do it again. We just would like to relax it for right now. I think that's where we're going with this. But I like a couple of things that were said, respectful has been said a lot tonight. I think that's most important. For example, I will continue to wear a mask. My business, I have a sign on it saying, you know, please wear a mask. And why is that? Because in any businesses that have that, I think we need to be respectful of those business owners and their rights to protect their employees. I have an employee that has a spouse that is, has immune deficiencies. And so, we don't want them to be scared and with the possibility of them getting sick. Totally understand that. So out of respect for her, I, we have, we have that sign on our thing. I have heard those say, that are against wearing masks, that saying, well, if there's a sign on a business, I'm not going to frequent that business. And especially if it's a small business, aren't we trying to support small business and encourage people going to small business? Isn't that part of just being respectful and saying, you know, I will put a mask on to go into that business? We have mentioned that small businesses are struggling... We have mentioned that small businesses are struggling the most. The big box stores are not struggling like the small businesses are.
True.
And we need to encourage that.
I, I will say that people that think that restaurants will be impacted by the action of the council tonight are, are going to need to know that they're still impacted by the executive orders.
That's right.
And there's a lot of places that they will still have to abide by restrictions, schools, because I'll tell you, as much as respect is an issue, understanding the layers of government and the layers of authority and, and who controls what is very lacking. And because of that, people get very angry at the wrong people or at the wrong businesses. And I know, I have friends that are small business owners, and, and they're going to have to now put that sign out just based on their own concerns about their own health. And, and that's going to be uncomfortable for some of them because they don't want to lose customers. And then they're the heavy. So it works both ways, and, and there is, there are just differences of opinion, and I hope that just by, I, I know that no one has done a better job of encouraging mask mandate or wearing mask and being respectful than Havasu. I really, I really believe that, based on everything I know about their actions. And I think, I think we see the trend that's there, and I think, you know, hopefully people will be respectful. We have wonderful people here. We also have some that are very angry and will still be angry when they go into a store or a restaurant and/or the bars don't open. And, you know, people are, what I feel are people are responsible for their response to things. And I, as a person, choose, you know, my response to somebody when they're being very angry at me or ugly at me or saying something I don't like, I still can choose my response. And that's where we come into respect. And I hope that when they find that there are still, there are still no's in the world that they will be able to have that ability to be respectful. Period. So I have a motion and a second. Vice Mayor?
And I just want to say, I think everybody on council really cares about our community, no matter what their views are on this issue. And the fact that there's so much division surrounding this issue, it's not just in Kingman, it's statewide. And the evidence of that is watching what the governor has been doing. And he said, I think he's on record, saying that he's not going to shut down the economy again. And the legislate, there's, there are legislators that have said, when, when the legislature goes into session in January, they are going to move to curb his executive powers, his emergency powers. So I mean, it's all the way from state government all the way down. We're seeing the division.
Well, it's globally. I mean, everywhere.
So, so I think no matter what happens at the policy level, administratively under Manager Foggan, and we have a PIO, there's a lot we can do on the public education side that will be helpful. And that's under your control.
Um, okay. I think.
I have a quick question.
All right, Counselor.
Apologize. And this is for staff. If we have to, if this resolution were to pass, would we have to wait, or I'm sorry, this proposed, I guess proposition were to pass, would we have to wait for another council meeting to discuss whether or not the council would be pushing for, you know, a proclamation or to discuss public education in regard to COVID? Or is that something that we would be able to discuss at this time prior to this, the close of this, of this issue?
The way I look at it is, once your, your motion is voted upon, if the motion passes, I think your, your, your agenda item is closed. If there's some conforming direction of a continuing educational campaign made prior to that, that might be fine. If the motion were to fail, it doesn't necessarily end this discussion because we still have the item up there. So that would be allowed to, there would be, you could make another motion that could be structured differently, if that makes sense.
I don't think I followed that. I, I didn't understand that, Carl. I thought at first he said the issue could not be addressed again tonight. Did I hear that you just said it could?
No, what I'm saying is, if, if the motion passes, then the item is over. If the motion fails, you still have the item sitting here to just make a determination of what you're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
So you could have a second motion that could be worded differently.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And, and like I say, the only reason we have that is because this thing is, it's kind of just hanging out there. It's awkward, so.
Okay. I appreciate it.
I do have one other question, Manager Foggan, regarding the safety of staff. If the council votes this down, will the city still be able to maintain its policy with the mask in place?
Yes, we have a responsibility to protect our employees, just as Counselor Watkins had pointed out, for his employees.
I think under the municipal code, the city manager has jurisdiction over all the public buildings and the public staff. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Then let's take a roll call vote.
Mayor Miles?
No.
Vice Mayor Langenfelder?
Yes.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
No.
Councilmember Watkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries four, three.
Correct.
Motion carries four, three. Okay, the next order of business will be department reports, as there is no new business. Am I right?
You're right.
Are you ready?
I don't know.
Yeah, me either. Let's go forth with department report on the downtown infrastructure design project.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. We are really, we're excited to be able to be to this point, actually, after, after a number of years, a number of conversations and a lot of reiter, reworkings of the downtown streetscape. I think we really currently have something that we can, that we can really get behind. And so in an effort to kind of show you where we've, where we are and where we're headed, we wanted to take a few minutes to just share with you what, what our consultant has been working on and what our plans are to share this with stakeholders in our community. And so I guess what I will do is turn it over. Rob, do you want to introduce our consultant?
Yes, sir, if I could. Tonight, we have Dick Yano and Jason Harrington with us, and they're part of the consulting team working on the downtown infrastructure design project. So they got a, they've got a brief presentation. So with that, I guess I would turn it over to them.
Thank you, Rob, and Mayor, and Council. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So we want to give a brief overview of what the project envisions and also show you some potential concepts that we've been considering, and also talk to you about the outreach program that we're proposing to do with business owners and others in the community. So I'll just jump into it. So the project area is Beal Street between First Street and Sixth Street. It also extends up to the alleys north of Beal and then south to Route 66. So it's that red area that we showed there. So this is kind of just an overview of a vision that we've been given to kind of follow through on to basically revitalize downtown, proving the walkability and aesthetics, maintain the historic character of Kingman, and create a safe, attractive, comfortable street for really all modes of transportation and also connections to Route 66, which is the main thoroughfare there. So some of the proposed improvements include infrastructure improvements for sidewalk ramps and driveways per ADA requirements. We'll also be looking at improving the pavement, including some marked defined pedestrian crossings, street lighting. We also will be looking at drainage improvements and utilities along the corridor. And in addition, we would look at some aesthetic improvements of landscaping and other amenities. So the public outreach starts today with the council presentation that we're providing to all of you. We also are developing a project website that will be publishing a lot of project information and advertising upcoming meetings that we'll be having. We're looking at some additional, initial stakeholder meetings with businesses and property owners in November. We haven't solidified those dates yet, but it's probably going to be mid-November sometime. And then also doing a public meeting, or the public at large, in the same time period. And we'll be presenting a lot of the same things we're talking about tonight. And then next year, as we develop the design further, we'll be coming back to the stakeholders and also the public at large at different points of completion for the design and having some follow-on public meetings also. So I just want to kind of go through existing conditions. All of you know what's out there, but things that we've seen that we obviously want to try to improve with Beal Street being fairly wide for the amount of traffic that goes through there, we want to try to make it more intimate for pedestrians and bicyclists to feel safe along there. There's angled parking currently, sidewalk frontage to businesses. There are some areas with steep ramps or stairs which are not ADA accessible, so we'll be looking at that along the corridor. There's also areas where streetlights and other obstructions that impede pedestrians in the sidewalk area, especially for ADA accessibility. There's some kind of steep grades along the street because of the overlays that have occurred over the years. So we'll be looking at, trying to make those improvements also. So now, we kind of want to show you some concepts. I'm going to let Jason Harrington, who's the landscape architect planner, on the project to kind of go through some potential design concepts. Jason?
Thank you, Dick. So we had looked at different alternatives, and this alternative that you see in front of you is one that had risen to the top in terms of the most favorable layout. We're looking at narrowing the roadway, maintaining 12-foot drivelanes for circulation for vehicles, maintaining the same angled parking that's present today, just pushing it a little closer to the center of the road, trying to maintain the same parking capacity so we have a similar quantity to what's out there today. And then pushing the curbs in a little bit closer to enlarge the pedestrian zone and the activation spaces along downtown frontage roads. We would grow these zones and segregate them into a landscape zone, an amenity zone, and a pedestrian zone, giving us roughly about 20 feet of space on both sides of Beal Street. We would have to configure the side streets, first through sixth, a little bit differently. They don't have quite the same right-of-way availability, but the adaptation would be very similar in terms of the programming. These zones that we're looking at would, would populate with plant material, provide shading and comfort, as well as aesthetics, cooling down urban heat island environment for our intersections. We propose to throttle down the intersection throats a little bit to provide a decorative crosswalk and an opportunity for what we call LID, or low-impact development, which is a green infrastructure technique. We would be able to capture stormwater runoff into these zones, have landscapable areas, look at water harvesting, again, other green infrastructure tools that could be present. Hoping to activate the space, we would create other features within our streetscape frontage, having things like bike racks, benches, trash receptacles, recycled bins located in the amenity zone, perhaps using different types of vegetation trees for segregating out, as more of a shade or an evergreen-type tree, and then complementing that with maybe a smaller stature flowering accent tree, potentially in a raised planter environment. Looking at improving the infrastructure as well with adding lighting, different scales and techniques of lighting. There can be roadway lighting, there can be pedestrian scale lighting, sometimes they're the same pole, sometimes they might be separated poles. Looking at also having dedicated bike parking. We'd like to encourage what we call active transportation, where you park once and circulate by foot or by, if you bring a bike in, having bike opportunities in there to create a safe environment and staging your bike area. Looking at potentially other LID tools would be to look at the parking zone, perhaps using a different type of a pavement surface, pavers, or even a pervious-type pavement for urban heat island, and also to improve some of the drainage through passive techniques, and that would cut down on infrastructure costs as well. Other elements to add to the street frontage that we feel are lacking would be a mid-block crossing, perhaps along some of the alleyways or halfway, reaching through intersections. I know a lot of people jaywalk in communities. Sometimes your, your destinations are on opposite sides of the road, and having a, a safe crossing environment would be something that we'd want to promote, maybe alternating that every other block instead of every block. Other opportunities that we look at in the streetscape redevelopment would be to add wayfinding elements. A lot of times, visitors might not be familiar with the destinations available along the community, and we'd like to identify that with perhaps signage or even integrated wayfinding elements, things that might be embedded in the pavement or embedded in the seating element, things like that. Looking forward to the future, you'd want to maybe entertain electric charging stations and then dedicating those spaces exclusive to those type of vehicles. Other things that are very popular in branding and identifying a community's culture would be using storytelling opportunities. These storytelling opportunities are also known as placemaking elements. Certain placemaking elements could be branded to tell a community history or a community fact. There, there are opportunities for using decorative or artistic elements to do so. In this particular concept in front of you, we're looking at having opportunities on the four corners of an intersection so that each block could possibly tell the story of the history of that block or a certain chapter in a book of, of the history of Kingman. Pedestrian zones, we'd want to use a durable, low-maintenance material. Some of our planning tools and elements, we always consider operations and maintenance as part of the infrastructure improvements. Again, we want long-lasting, high-quality materials that set a precedence for the branding of the corridor. Other potential elements that we would look at for streetscape frontage might be safety bollards, primarily at intersections, to help provide safe refuge for, for pedestrians crossing, as well as control potential traffic. Crash zones normally found at intersections help protect businesses as well as, as individuals themselves. Next slide, Dick. Next slide, Dick. So we've created some potential visions of 3D renderings for this, just to give some people who may not understand a two-dimensional environment a better perspective on some of the elements that we would propose at this time. So we've got a 3D model of a couple of your block segments, just to help represent some of our vision. Again, this is very preliminary, so all of the public input that Dick had shared from some of our stakeholder outreach and general public event will help guide us to modify this initial vision as well as council input as well on what might evolve from this potential concept. Next slide. So the things that we do as part of a planning environment is we look at other peer communities. What are some of the other agencies that have a similar character, similar scale, similar culture doing, and how have they found lessons to be learned or successful elements or possibly even negative lessons that we don't want to repeat, some mistakes that other communities have followed through with? So we entertained Bend, Oregon as a community that has kind of a downtown, classic Main Street feel, maybe a little bit of history and culture. Prescott is a peer Arizona community with maybe some similar historical elements to it. Williams, who also shares the Route 66 corridor, and just evaluate what some of their design elements may be, kind of see what somebody else has built, see what kind of success they may have had, as well as lessons learned. Next slide, please. Within these environments, we kind of dissect out different features. And when we talk about some terminology for the landscaped area and other places, we look at, you know, when we create a terminology, what does that envision to everybody who might participate in evaluating this? So we use something called precedent imagery. So the precedent imagery that you see in front of you in the next few slides talk about different key elements that we've proposed for the concept. Having bumpouts for rain gardens and LID planters are what you see in the top row, different types of crosswalks that create high visibility for safety as well as traffic calming, some potential parking alternatives as well, just something different than the norm with asphalt or concrete. When we describe wayfinding, there's different techniques to use for wayfinding, whether it's monumentation signs and mapping, whether it's integrated features that might be on a flat surface or a vertical surface with literal signage that provides direction and distance to destination, or even potential banners and things like that that can be rotated out through a holiday season or through an annual season basis. Next slide. Other key design elements might be lighting, again, entertaining potentially solar lighting as a green infrastructure technique, looking at different colors, different character styles from acorn-style lighting to classic bell lighting to other types of lantern-style lighting as well. And we could also implement seasonal electrical outlets and speaker devices to activate the streetscape as well. Your character seating, these are all very similar. We've looked at what you've done at Powerhouse and having some decorative artistic branding built into some of these seedings. There are other seating alternatives besides this if we'd want to entertain that. Promoting bike racks, again, things that can be customized to represent your community culture in terms of metal racks, concrete racks or another tool technique. Some of them can even be racks that have a dual purpose, like a seating element. Next slide. Trash and litter receptacles as well as recycle bins, again, matching some of the other character elements for continuity. Development of the amenity zone, again, the alignment and placement of some of these things, whether they be inward-facing or outward-facing, whether they include trees and tree grates or trees and planters. They could even potentially be decorative, different type of surface materials to help segregate different zones. Amenity zone has very similar things as well, looking at LID infrastructure, looking at different passive uses, social opportunities as well as comfort note opportunities for their, potentially even entertaining on-street bike parking to maximize your activation of the pedestrian space if you wanted to use, you know, other areas that might enlarge some restaurant spaces for outdoor dining or for presentation areas if that's desired. Next slide. Mid-block crossings, electric charging stations, safety bollards, again, a lot of the elements that we had already described in our initial concept that can help activate the space and really set the tone with key placemaking elements. Next slide.
Okay, so that kind of gives you some ideas on what we're thinking. We want to start gathering input on some of the stuff we've developed and working with the business owners and the public. So as far as next steps, we're here in October. We'll be developing some concepts and having these stakeholder meetings going toward, to the end of the year, and then into 2021, we'll be developing the design of the project with additional meetings at different milestones throughout the design of the project and finish up kind of, you know, we're thinking about mid-August of next year with the design, and then I know as soon as construction funding becomes available, it would be able to move to construction. Rob, I don't know if you want to talk to that a little bit as far as what that step would be?
Well, thank you, Dick, and thank you, Jason. Yeah, I think it's, you know, if, as we get to preliminary cost estimates on the project and we start looking at logical phasing plans for the project, we'll be trying to incorporate that into next year's budget depending on funding levels, of course. So I think that would be something that would be ongoing. And I guess with that, counsel, I could try to answer any questions, or I'm sure Dick and Jason could also.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilor Scott Staley.
First, I'd like to say that I think this looks really great, and I heard so many positives about, you know, traffic calming, about landscape, the trees to cool things down, to make it more pedestrian-friendly, safer places to park bikes. So all these things are very exciting. It really looks great. My question is about the flooding issues that we have downtown, and often in the summers when we used to have monsoon rains, you would park your car down there, the rain would hit, and then it was hard to get back in your car because the way the water rushes down and was right around where your car door is. And I want to ask about how we're addressing that in this design.
Okay. I'll start, Dick, and if you have anything to add. So I think, you know, this, where we're at right now is we have this concept, but I guess the addition of some of these, like the amenity zone and some of these other zones will allow us the opportunity to address some of the drainage issues we have now. I know I've been in certain restaurants downtown when storms hit and that water comes flying across the street and it's coming into the restaurant. So I think that's something that we'll be able, we'll have more space to address those issues. And I know Jason's also talked about the low-impact development, and that's, you know, the use of drainage swales or some other smaller detention areas, you know, that are really just kind of local detention areas. So I think a big benefit will be that, you know, the street is going to be more narrower to traffic and thus allowing us to deal with not only drainage but also utility reconfiguration and street lighting and being able to address some of those items.
That's really great.
Yeah, I think some of the other things as far as sustainability and low-impact development, being able to capture the rainwater to use to water the landscaping. And, you know, with Jason's expertise in that area, we've been this elsewhere where you can actually capture the water. And so it's not just running into a drainage system and nobody's getting the benefit of the rain we get, but it's enhancing the landscaping in there, so.
I was thrilled to hear the words rainwater harvesting. You know, those are projects that we've kind of brought up in the past, and I think this is a great chance for us to show just how successful it can be. And certainly, I mean, we just had a meeting on Monday where we were talking about saving every water that we get because it's really crucial. So I was excited to hear that. The only other comment I wanted to add was about the charging stations, and I would love to see these right in downtown. I know there's one down the street at the Carl's Jr. There's several charging stations there, and every time I drive past, I look to see how many cars are there, and there's usually several Teslas sitting there charging up. And I wonder if those people are sitting there in that parking lot or if they're making their way down because it is a couple blocks to get into our downtown to be shopping and eating. So adding those in the middle of our downtown would be beneficial to the business owners down there. And other than that, I just want to say thank you. I'm excited to see this.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jamie, I'm surprised you didn't ask about bike lanes. My first question is about, does the design incorporate some bike lanes?
Yeah, it will definitely accommodate bikes. We may consider designated bike lanes, but for a street like this, we're trying to slow the traffic down to calm the traffic and slow it down to where the bicyclist would feel comfortable, kind of at the edge of the traffic versus, you know, having to have a designated bike lane. I mean, usually you want to designate a bike lane on an arterial heavy-volume street to separate it, but we're hoping that we can make things calming enough to be able to have the bikes with the traffic. Jason, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but that's more typical of downtown environments like this.
Yeah, so with traffic calming and narrowing the roads and, you know, maintaining a lower level of speed, we create what's called a shero environment, and then there's specialty pavement markings and signage that allows bicycle users and cars to have an equal level of sharing of the road. Other design techniques have been advisory bike lanes. Usually it's more when it's a more throttled-down roadway, but the shero should be a safe environment for cyclists without additional striping or additional right-of-way that can be, you know, more dedicated to the landscape or more dedicated to the activation of the frontage of the businesses.
Thank you. I only have one other question. So I'm sure staff has already told you, but our city has a parklets policy right now downtown, and under that policy, some of our bars and our restaurants are starting to create some additional outdoor eating areas, public gathering spaces. With all these beautifications and Kingman's beautiful weather, I think people are really going to want to sit outside and gather outside. So will the design incorporate either allowing for parklets or will there be some working with the businesses that are interested in having some of those additional outdoor eating and drinking areas?
Yes, the intent is, and I pulled back this drawing, but the parklets could be put in any of the designated spaces, parking areas. I know the city has an ordinance for that, so this would accommodate that, to be able to set different seating areas in the parking area itself. So we've considered that and will make sure that can be accommodated as the businesses desire to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes?
And Dick, I guess just to add, I think that's something that could be fleshed out during the whole stakeholder involvement process.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you so much for the report. It looks exciting, and it'll be interesting to get all the public comments coming in, and it looks really good. It's been in the making a long time. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our final report, which will be the water sustainability update.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel? It was referenced a little bit earlier about the water sustainability and the USGS study that was presented yesterday at the county facility. And as we've been sitting through these presentations, to me, it became obvious that what we needed to do is make sure that we were sharing the entire picture for the council and the community. The USGS study is a piece of work that I think has, one that we can really count on. And a lot of effort has gone into it. A lot of technology was used to basically develop it, and it adds some good news at the end, which is based on the current water usage, we have a hundred-year water supply. That being said, it's not enough, and we've been given some time in which to, I guess, plan for our future, our children's future, and our grandchildren's future, and well past that as well. And so as we looked at this report, it gave us the reason to stop and pause and say, look, what are we doing to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to have this water supply last for not a hundred years but hundreds of years? And so we're not going to just rest on the USGS study. We're actually going to actively do our part to save water and to do what we, you know, what we should be doing and what we should have been doing all along, which is protecting a resource that's not replenishing as much or as quickly as I think we would hope. And so with that, I've asked Rob and his team to basically explain everything that we're doing now and what we're planning to do in the future to make sure that our water supply is adequate for this community for as long as it exists. And so that's what we have for you tonight, is just kind of a plan of, to show you what you've been getting from us and what you can hope to get from us in the future. So Rob, you want to walk us through what you have?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I guess I would invite Mr. Henry to jump in if he has any more detailed information on any of these projects or copy.
And I apologize for that. I did mean to mention Greg in that as well.
Mayor, counsel, in light of Monday's presentation at the board supervisors meeting, as Ron said, we felt we'd like to put this presentation together for you. So I'll start out with kind of a recap of some of the Aquafor legislation that has happened in recent years, go through the water system a little bit, some of the project updates that we're working on through either on our own or with the Water Sustainability Task Force, kind of our, some of our goals and performance measures and some of our future plans and policies. So in 2019, the Mojave County West Basin Water User Study Group, Study Committee was established, and back in 18, the legislature approved $1,000 for the Department of Water Resources consultant to study the Northwest Basins, and that report was completed in December. There's some discussion about that report yesterday. In 2017, we signed the IGA with Mojave County to participate with them in the USGS on the model, and again, the preliminary findings of that model were presented at the board meeting, the joint meeting with the board yesterday, and they advised that that final report should be available in December or January. And they advised that that final report should be available in December or January, I believe. Excuse me. This is just an inventory of our wells. So the vast majority of our well field is in the Walupi Basin, what would be the Kingman Sub Basin of the Walupi Basin. Out of this list, Citywell 10 is currently in design and working with contractor on the job board of contracts. So that should be coming to council in the near future. This is an inventory of the downtown wells, which are within the Sacramento Basin. As you can tell, there are more shallow wells. They are, have a smaller horsepower pumping systems. And as a result, the gallons per minute that they produce is substantially lower than the Walupi well field. So again, here's the total capacity of the system. So generally, at our typical operation, the downtown wells provide around 12% of the average daily demand for our water customers. Running full bore, we can get that up to 16 or 17%. That'll be important later on when we talk about, you know, one of our performance measures is trying to get that percentage of Sacramento Basin water into our system up to 25%. So again, this is, you know, the Water Sustainability Task Force has adopted the One Water Framework. So when we've done these presentations before, you know, we talked about the water projects, we talked about the wastewater projects and the stormwater projects because our kind of management philosophy is that it is one resource and it is, and we have to address it comprehensively. And that includes from all of those different types of projects. So again, we have the Sustainability Task Force. We do project updates with the county on a kind of on a quarterly basis. And that's been useful. We've been talking about some policy decisions that we'll get into a little bit later in the presentation. We've initiated a quarterly well sounding program. So we're sounding our wells on a quarterly basis. And so that will give us a more direct database in addition to some of the proposed groundwater monitoring that was discussed at the USGS meeting. We initiated the meter testing program. The first phase of that is complete. We tested a pretty large sample of our three-to-quarter inch meters. I'm sorry, two-foot inch by five-eighths meters. And so we use that to prioritize replacements for those. And those are our customer meters. The next phase of that will be starting in January, which will be meter testing on some of our larger production meters. You know, we need to verify that what we're pulling out of the wells, the amounts that we're pulling out of the wells are accurate and are going into our overall water balance as an accurate number. We've done some demonstration projects on water leak detention, detection. We're working with our vendor on that. We are looking to buy some equipment, but we have had some success, some limited success, I would say, on projects where we know there's a leak that we've had trouble finding. And we've been able to get that vendor up here to give us a hand on that. Again, Citywell 10 pump a motor that is under development as we speak. Generally, there's distribution lines that we do. That's to try to address some of the leakage in the system. And I know we've talked about this before, but you know, we currently have a system that's mixed between distribution and transmission. So some of our transmissions running through distribution lines, some of that water hammer that's produced is causing leaking. So that's kind of why some of these transmission main projects are priorities to kind of address some of that leaking. And not just start skipping around. If anybody has any questions on any particular projects, let me know. I know it's been a long night. We're looking at doing storage tank construction up at the main tank farm. That would be a new tank up there would add a million gallons of storage to the system. Helps alleviate some of the issues we have during high demand periods. Some of the plans were, you know, the water conservation plan is underway and that should generate recommendations on water conservation measures that we can do both within our system and things that we can maybe establish to encourage our customers to to improve water conservation on their end. We did, we are currently working on the water system risk assessment and the emergency response plan. That was a requirement of some federal legislation. The risk assessment portion is complete. The response plan is underway. We are working on Sacramento Valley well sighting study. We should have a draft of that in the near future. And then we're also doing our water GIS mapping. And again, a lot of this GIS mapping will allow us to incorporate some of the some of the leak information that maybe in the past was more anecdotal into the GIS database and maybe give us a little bit more solid information to make recommendations on improvements to the system. On the wastewater side, of course, the big project is the reclaim water recharge well. We recently completed a change order to that project. We encountered issues with that project when we drilled and cased that well and that the conditions we thought we would find at the 700-foot level, essentially we hit play. And it's not going to allow the use of that hole for direct injection into the aquifer. We kind of went through and evaluated several alternatives. And the one we're moving forward with would be a Bado Zone well. So this would be a deep Bado Zone well. But it has to be redesigned in order to accommodate that. What the plan is going forward is that we would be recharging that reclaimed water probably about 400 feet deep, three to 400 feet deep rather than the 700 feet deep. So it may take a little bit longer to get to the aquifer. One potential benefit is that there would be additional natural filtration as it worked its way there. So again, we're in the design phase of that. We have started talking with a contractor on the construction phase of that project. The big project on the sewer side is the downfall line relocation project. So that is 60% plans, I believe. One thing that we did add to that project was the following project, the Purple Pipe Distribution System. Greg Henry kind of had the eureka moment of if we're building a new downfall line to the downtown plant, why don't we build a reclaimed water line back downtown that we could send the reclaimed water from the downtown plant back down to downtown to use on some of the park sites and athletic fields downtown. So that project is in the design concept report stage, but the inclusion of that reclaimed water pipe coming back would be included in the downfall line project. And it would just leave another project to do the rest of the distribution system, including any pumps, storage tanks, or any other ancillary equipment. Devlin Avenue Sewer Project, that's complete. That was a joint project with the county. The county is using their CBGT funds to connect some of the low and moderate income customers out there to that new sewer line in Devlin Avenue. Diagonal Wash is a sewer interceptor project that's underway. That would be a a new downfall line, or I'm sorry, a new line through Diagonal Wash that would cross both Route 66 and the railroad tracks. So essentially it'll open up and provide a sewer interceptor sewer downfall line from that East Bench area where a lot of our future development is planned. It would also provide some services to some existing homes through the Kingman New Butler area. We work on various extension projects. Most of these are trying to address little septic islands that we have. So there'll be, you know, one block of Kingman Avenue or one block of Pasadena Street or, you know, we'll try to fill in some of the some of the holes that we got in the sewer collection system. And again, sewer GIS mapping and all the benefits of having better information about our system. Sewer repair replacements that addresses slip lining projects or cured and placed repairs where we're not tearing up streets or not causing, we're not trenching. So we're going in, you know, from manhole to manhole and providing a new liner of the sewer line that's been cured and hardened to help reinforce that sewer line. And one of the other projects we have too is the wastewater infiltration. We get water infiltration into the wastewater system through antiquated manholes and other types of infrastructure like that. So we're working on trying to get those projects completed also. On the stormwater side, I guess Greg, maybe I would defer to you on the dry well installation. I know that there was a contract that I believe recently went to council.
Sure thing, Rob. Good evening, Mayor, Council and Public. The dry well project was awarded at the last council meeting, October 6th. And it will include 10 dry wells at various locations throughout the city. And we did have our kickoff meeting with them last week. They intend to start the first Monday in November. The company will be coming up from Phoenix. Their torrent resources is the subcontractor that's going to be drilling the dry wells. They have extensive experience in putting dry wells in Phoenix. So they'll likely mobilize up on Monday, the second, and get right into it the morning of November 3rd, so.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. And some of these other projects are just either active or planned. Flood controls, stormwater projects, you know, the H Street underpass, I believe that project is completed or near complete. But a lot of those projects would have some ancillary detention or retention. Some of them would, not all of them, but again, under this framework, you know, all we, you know, we need to address all of these types of projects. This is a list of Mojave County's projects. This is one of the, you know, we, when we have our Water Sustainability Task Force meetings, we generally brief each other on the status of some of these. I don't have a current update on what the status of these projects are, but I can provide that information when we have our next task force meeting. So some of the other future projects, you know, I think moving forward, as Magic Foggin had said, water source diversification is going to be our mantra moving forward. That's something that, you know, I think, yes, we have time, but I think, you know, our situation, you know, we're in a serious situation and we need to move in this direction. So one of the things that the USGS had talked about was the groundwater monitoring program and our participation in that as far as, and, you know, we'll definitely make available our well sounding information to them. But if we, if we need to partner with them on some other individual projects or specific projects or programs, that's something we may be bringing back to council. Increased our downtown well production. So I think, you know, we'll be bringing in consultants to look at that, make recommendations on you know, which wells we may be able to just increase pump size, which ones we may need to drill deeper. But to look, take a more detailed look at that and start moving forward on some of those projects. Another project may be Walupi Basin well development. Now, the city does own some property that is out by Long Mountain. And as was discussed in the meeting yesterday, that's kind of the cutoff between the Kingman Sub Basin and the Walupi Basin. So I think we have potential to develop well sites that would be outside of the Kingman Sub Basin and possibly in the Walupi Basin itself. And again, that may be important, you know, at the point where the USGS talked about the shelf between, you know, our sub basin and the rest of the Walupi Basin. And at some point, according to their projections in the future, those two basins, our sub basin will become separated from the rest of the Walupi Basin. And again, something that we've initiated now is the Sacramento Basin well development. Looking at the well sites we have out there, looking at potential other sites, looking at all of our options in Sacramento Basin, you know, including our downtown well production. So just as a department, you know, these are some of our goals and performance measures. So conduct an annual AWWA, and that's American Water Works Association, water loss audit. So that's currently underway. We are we are, we have an outside consulting in who's validating our last three years of water loss audits. And at some point, I'd like to bring forward a presentation to the council on this because this is really a fascinating process. At least it is for me. But it goes through the system and looks at, and based upon the information you put into this program, it makes recommendations on implementation strategies for you. You know, they don't really talk about, water loss is kind of an equated term in the water field. Now, the newer term is non-revenue water. So that's water that we've paid to pump and put into the system. And we're not getting, we're not selling it. We're not getting water for it. So as part of our performance measures, we'll maintain our water loss percentage. And like I said, we, our performance measure is that we reduce water loss by 10% each year over five years. Install 1,000 smart meters this fiscal year. We purchased 1,500 smart meters. At the end of last year, we've got 300 of them in the ground right now. Tracking efficiency of those meeting, those new meters, you know, we're building that database now to be able to compare what those customers used under the, or what they were billed for, I guess, is the primary thing, under the with the old meters versus what the new meters show is their use. And as we talked about, our goal is to increase percentage of other source water to 25% of our system demand. And just talk a little bit about plans and policies, you know, the One Water Framework that's been adopted, you know, that went through the West End but task force. We had a reclaim water use priority policy that's been through the task force that still needs to go to the utility commission that it sends, it essentially says that recharge of our reclaimed water is the top use priority. And then it lists other uses in descending order. High water user policy, this is interesting. This is something we talked about the task force and whether that would just be a hard cap or some other form, you know, we had a little bit of problems just on the research, trying to find some similar policy types to look at. Some places, you know, it appears to be just a hard number that, you know, this is our biggest average user now and that's going to be the cap. Other places, it's more of a cost benefit analysis. Other places, it's more of a cost benefit analysis, and maybe it takes into consideration job creation or other types of things. The drainage master plan update is underway and essentially, essentially complete. If, if that's wrong, I guess you can correct me, Greg. I think there's still some work.
It's complete, and it's been uploaded to the City of Kingman website.
Some things we talked about out there before would be the city adopting the county's drainage design and administrative manual, just to kind of ensure some consistency across, across our jurisdictions. And that's maybe a future project or a future effort that we make. You know, we're undergoing the stormwater fee study now, and again, just the water conservation program, which would, would be a recommendation from the plan we're working along, we're working on along with any incentives that would be recommended out of that plan. So I know it was a kind of a long presentation. I guess I didn't think it was that long, but if you have any questions, we can try to answer.
Thank you so much for the presentation. That was a lot to digest, actually. But I, I appreciate the information. And one of the things that yesterday's USGS report indicated very clearly is that, that we do have some time to make these plans and to implement them to, and it's going to be critical because extending it beyond 100 years is critical. I really celebrate that you are looking at the multiple sub basins, Walupi, Kingman, and Sacramento, and all of these different ways so that we diversify. My first question was about the 25% of the, coming from different sources from the Kingman sub bases. I didn't see a timeline associated with that. So is that within what period of time, 25% of, from alternative sources?
I believe that was a five-year timeframe, but I would have to go back and verify it once.
That, that is the number that we've been using.
Five years, so within a five-year timeframe to have it from diverse 25% from something other than the Kingman sub basin.
Correct.
My other question is, at the 400-foot level that you're thinking of, the recharge and 400, that's going to give it additional time to filter, which is good because even treated water has some things that you want to remove before it gets to the aquifer. Is there any, anything that should be concerned about with the quality of water once it gets into the Kingman sub basin, given that there is going to be a bridge created between the Kingman sub basin and the Walupi basin, so that recharge water, which is in the Kingman sub basin, will be in that sub basin? Is there any issues that, are there any issues that you see associated with that recharge?
I, I don't, ma'am. We're going through that permitting process now, but, you know, as the gentleman from USGS said yesterday, Arizona's been doing this for a long time. And when we first, you know, ran into the issue, you know, our team, Keeland specifically and Burley, you know, they had reached out to other cities and, you know, a lot of, a lot of cities in Arizona, this is their preferred method of recharge. You know, City of Scottsdale, most of their recharge wells are Beto's own. City of Surprise, which was where we got a lot of our information, you know, when, when this first happened, we needed to figure out, you know, how's it going to affect us as far as operations and maintenance and all those things? But, you know, this kind of seems to be the preferred method of recharge in, in most of the communities that we've contacted. And I don't know, you know, there is a potential for savings, you know, generally Beto zones should be less expensive than injection wells and less expensive to operate. So I think, I think we're pretty comfortable with it. And, you know, so far, our engineers and our hydrogeologists are pretty confident that we can achieve the same sort of level of recharge that we talked about with the injection.
Okay, thank you. One, one last thing for me. Yesterday, we heard a lot of figures, and I know that the City of Kingman uses 8,000 acre feet of water a year, generally for municipal purposes. I believe that's correct. And they were, they were giving figures about agricultural use at, at a build out, basically. And that number was very large, and I don't remember specifically, was it 100 and, does anybody, do you remember, Manager Foggan, 180?
Yeah, so the number that the USGS is showing for maximum use from agriculture was approximately 120,000 acre feet.
120,000 acre feet a year.
Yep.
And so right now, even though, you know, some of these farms are starting, and they are doing good things to shift their crops into less water intensive crops, I think the one thing that the city will have to address as it moves forward is, again, working with our legislators and particularly supporting the continued effort to get a rural management area formed. I think Representative Cobb will bring that forth again this year. And it's going to be really important because that's really a recommending body. It's not a, you know, the best that I think we can do, given that Mojave County missed out on anything in the past with respect to water management, is create a recommending body. And so I think the city will really have to support that as part of its planning efforts to support that legislation. The, the need for really working with the agricultural people who are here, but also making sure that there's a forum for that dialogue is going to be critical. And so, any other questions for Rob, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would just echo what you said yesterday. I think the USGS report, the numbers and the data that were presented were probably better than what some may have been anticipating. So that was good news. There's certainly work to be done and a sense of urgency needs to be kept. But, you know, what I really want to say is, over the past four years, how proud I am, just as a citizen, of all the stuff that we've seen, a lot of this stuff, you know, the adoption of the water sustainability task force, which is city and county integrated together, the adoption of the One Water Framework at the city, dry wells, a lot of this stuff is really forward thinking and, and pretty sophisticated. And it's, it's good to see that, you know. I think next year, from what I heard and took away from the discussion yesterday was, when I step into Supervisor Watson's role next year, I think that there's a real opportunity for us, myself as the supervisor and for the city, to really try to form an agricultural consortium or something where we would meet regularly and really work with these people because they're already here. I think we really need to make the best of it and bring them into our water efforts. So I'm excited to do that. Overall, it's, it's pretty, pretty neat to see all the stuff that the City of Kingman is doing.
It is, and, and it is sophisticated. And one of the things that is really an exciting potential is the use of the USGS model for projecting and forecasting. And that is a basis for decision making. And so I think that brings a lot to the, to the whole discussion, to have that ability. This was better than, better results than the original matrix study. They, it's not that I either was wrong, it's just the assumptions were different for the USGS. They were more refined assumptions. And one of the things I don't think was mentioned yesterday, but I think it was important, was the basis, the flat bottom basis that ADWR used versus the real topographical modeling that was demonstrated by the USGS study. And so there are a number of factors that make, you know, me, having a science background, I love this kind of stuff. But it's such a cool tool to have and should be used going forth by city and county together to make good decisions. And I'm, I'm sure that will happen if we pay the price, which it will be a funding issue, by the way. All right. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor?
Yes, Council Watkins.
Rob, can you talk a little, just the, the smart meters? I know you mentioned we purchased, what, 1,400, did you say?
1,500.
1,500?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're talking about technology, and that's what these smart meters are enabling us to do, to monitor water usage. Can you explain a little bit more about the smart meters and their, and their, their purpose, what they're accomplishing, or do we need to save that for another time?
No, I, I can try to be brief, and if I'm not, I'm sure somebody here will tell me to be briefer. But, so the smart meters are part of our overall plan is go to an AMI system. So that's automated meter infrastructure. So the first phase of that would be the meter installation. So we're, let's say we're currently installed 300 meters. We've got, we ordered 1,500. So right now, we, we will be able to ride those or read those by driving by, so we won't be out reading, manually reading every meter. As we get more of them installed, when we get up to 2,000 meters in the system, we'll start moving forward as far as the fixed base infrastructure, which is the towers and the repeaters and the transmitters, which will allow the meters to be read, you know, by the, by the system itself, and those reads to be transmitted down to the utility billing directly. At that point, you'll, you'll realize the full potential of the system and that you can set the system, you can set red flags in the system. So if you see dramatic water use at strange times of the night or whatever, ultimately it would be possible for us to be able to alert customers that they've got a leak on their side. Also, it would include other listening equipment within the, or other audio equipment within the system that would allow us to detect leaks on our side. So as of right now, we're, we're getting some benefit out of the system, but as far as, you know, we did, we kind of decided not to move forward with the rest of the fixed base system until we have more meters in the ground. But once that, once that moves forward, then we'll have full capability. And that's something we're pretty excited about.
Okay.
Meter reading in general is kind of problematic for us, so this, this would be a major improvement, not just on our side, but also potentially for our customers down the road.
How many water meters do we have in system right now? Total?
Twenty, this guy, 22,000. Just a little bit less than 22,000.
28,000, wow.
22, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's quite an undertaking then, budget wise also.
Yes, it'll be an ongoing project, and we, we have identified some grant funding sources that we will start tapping in to supplement, you know, our, our local funds. There are a couple different avenues, so that's something that we look forward to going forward.
Well, it definitely will help us with, you know, water conservation. I know even with the, the old, I have an old water meter in my house, and a city employee came by and said, hey, you've had an excessive use of water. And so even with currently what we have technology wise, they still were able to come by and say, hey, can you check for leaks? Your water's use this month is way out. And this happened about eight months ago or so. But anyway, I had a leak and I found it. And so I appreciate all this being done. So this is a great move, too. So, once again, we appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to announcements by Mayor, Council members, and city manager. Sorry, Manager Foggan, do you have announcements?
I do have announcements. Thank you, Mayor. My first announcement is just to let everybody know, one of the things that was expected on this agenda was the development agreement with Sunbelt and our efforts that we're trying to make on the Rancho Santa Fe project. And I just wanted to let everybody know that, that that is still in the works. And the announcement is that we're planning on having that on November 17th council meeting. Just a couple of items that we're still trying to, the developer was trying to get ironed out. And so it's, it's alive and well, and we're working very closely and very hard to get that, that agreement to the council. And so our, our current plan is to have that on November 17th council meeting. So if there was anybody that was missing it, because we had been talking about it, that's where it is. A very special week that this community has, has celebrated or has recognized over the last number of years is Walk Away From Drugs Week. And so this week is Walk Away From Drugs. And we want to continue to encourage organizations, families, businesses, everybody in the community to get out and take a walk and walk purposefully against drugs and drug use. Reeks havoc in our community and with families. And so we are definitely on board with that. It looks a lot different than it has in the past because of the world we currently find ourselves living in, but that doesn't mean we can't get out and walk. The city organization will be, will be getting out and walking away from drugs Thursday at noon. We're going to meet on the Burbank side of Centennial Park, and we're going to walk the entire full block in, in that effort to show our support for that. And so I'm just encouraging everybody to get out. The other announcement, just as a reminder, Election Day is November 3rd. There will be no council meeting in, in recognition that there are council members that are volunteering at polling stations, and there's just general interest that's probably greater than a council meeting. So no council meeting, 11-3. And I think that is all of my announcements.
Thank you. Councilwoman Melo Kiner? Council Watkins?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilperson Nelson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Council Wait?
I don't have any announcements tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Daphne Daley?
Nothing else this evening.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This afternoon, I attended the online CAMA meeting. There was a really good presentation today on, from MCC, from Jason Gee, and on the Industrial Training Center that they're looking at locating out in the industrial park. Initially, a 10,000 square foot lease. They did a whole presentation on a talent management, a talent pipeline management software, which does a really good job, I guess, of integrating all the players, letting everybody know exactly what their role is in the system. So really, just, just a tremendous effort that that is, and it's going to, it's going to build our workforce up, you know, for industrial and the trades. They're, they're, they're thinking about bringing the HVAC program that they have in Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City into that new facility in Kingman. So they're expanding the HVAC program into Kingman. They're looking at possibly moving their electrical engineering, electrical stuff into that facility. So just really promising how it's starting to develop.
That's very.
In just over a year.
Very exciting.
It's fascinating, thank you.
And a lot of their equipment for electrical and HVAC, it's all been made transportable, so they should be able to transport it in, and if they need it at another campus, they can always take it. But that's, that's really exciting.
Yeah, it just makes our, what we have to offer in Kingman that much stronger.
And tomorrow at Tri-City Council, which was at 10, I think Dr. Klippenstein is on the agenda, and he will be giving a report on the, the efforts that we are doing countywide on the achieve 60 or Northwest attainment, which is going to be a good report and heartening also because there's, every city has a hub and is working, there's a whole group here in Kingman that is being formed now. And I will say that incoming Councilor Cherish Samley is the hub leader. And she is, we have a good group that is going to be working on helping people get credentials and degrees, and that training center will be really important. So that was really my only announcement, was about the meeting tomorrow. Are there any requests for council, for future reports and updates? Just leave it open.
Just briefly, in light of the unwavering motion, perhaps it would behoove the council to discuss COVID-related perhaps it would behoove the council to discuss COVID-related, um, public outreach going forward. So if we could put something to that effect on the next agenda, that would be wonderful.
Is that, uh, Manager Foggan, is that a action item or a, that's, or a report or?
Just a report.
Just a report, okay, thank you, that's what I thought. Um, okay, anything else? Then I would entertain a motion to move into executive session for the City Manager's annual review, where we will conduct an evaluation of the City Manager. Could I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we go to executive session.
Is there a second?
I second that.
We have a motion, a second to go into executive session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, and we'll return, uh, but for this, we're adjourned from the regular meeting and we will now move into executive session.
Mayor, can I comment just before we go into executive session?
Is this Carl Cooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, because.
I just want to make sure that, uh,
Just because it's you.
You know, because I'm not going to be in the executive session. Obviously, you're aware that those information, the information discussed there needs to remain in executive session. And those folks that are not attending personally, or if you're attending remotely, make sure that you are, uh, by yourself and you, uh, are cognizant of who may be, uh, in the room with you or if you've got a door you can close, just so nobody is, uh, potentially overhearing some of the discussion.
Thank you, Carl, and, um, so you'll be in there by phone though, right?
I had not planned on attending the executive session. It's just an evaluation that you're having with your manager. You don't need legal.
So who has the, um, language for the, well, you, I guess you've already given it, the admonition.
Yeah, I tried to give you that, that was the admonition I was giving you, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
obtain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's motion, the second adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye.